Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law, and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, and those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect, and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Councillors, before we continue with the meeting, I wish to advise that the amended Meetings Local Law 2024 was gazetted on the 9th of August 2024 and is now in effect, and I recommend all councillors familiarise themselves with the amended Meetings Local Law. A copy was emailed to all councillors and is also available on the LG Hub. Are there any apologies? councillor Gibney.
Chair, I advise that councillor Dixon will be absent today, and I move that she be granted leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Gibney and seconded by councillor Adaman, that councillor Dixon be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
Are there any further apologies? Councillor Collier.
Chair, I advise that councillor Cassidy will be absent today, and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Kim that councillor Cassidy be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Confirmations of minutes, please.
Chair, I move the minutes of the 4,742nd Meeting of Council, held on Tuesday the 6th of August 2024, be received, taken as read, and confirmed.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Gibney and seconded by councillor Adaman that the minutes of the 4,742nd Meeting of Council, held on the 6th of August 2024, be received, taken as read, and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it. I would like to call now on Mr Santiago Velazquez, who will address the chamber on the Halo app and improving public transport for persons with disabilities. Please proceed, Mr Velazquez. Thank you, Mr Velazquez. When you're comfortable, when you're ready. You have five minutes.
Good afternoon, councillors and Lord Mayor. Thank you very much for your time today. So, I'm here to talk about something that is in our everyday lives and yet is oftentimes for granted when you are able to use it. I would like to take you to Adelaide Street, and I would like for you to picture catching a bus with your eyes closed, or I would like for you to think of catching a bus with a wheelchair, or with a pram, or if you don't speak the language. Now, all of those scenarios are difficult at best, but what you guys may not know is that they are hell for people with disabilities. For myself, I often get left behind by buses, whether it's to catch up with friends, whether it is to go for job interviews, or whether it is to do an exam at university that if I don't show up, I could fail. And if it's not because of all of that, it's because public transport should work for all of us. And you guys have a very difficult job as councillors and as administrators of such a large city, that, you know, making sure that it does work for everybody isn't an easy task. So this is why I'm here, because I decided that being frustrated about it wasn't good enough, and I decided that using my lived experience, as well as my technical experience as an electrical engineer, would be a better solution. So, I'm here to say that being left behind by buses because you can't see them, being dropped off at the incorrect stop because you can't see where to get off because the driver forgets to tell you, shouldn't be a thing. And through Halo, we have shown that this can be fixed, in Sydney, in Queen Beeun, in Tweetheads, and most recently overseas. However, I'm here because my own city hasn't afforded us the opportunity for us to fix an issue that thousands of Australians here face every day, and it's an issue that means you guys spend more money to subsidise taxis, you guys spend more money to make sure that I can leave the community and yet I'm still not using public transport, and society at large loses the contribution from persons that are stuck at home. Halo works very simply, and I'm looking for Brisbane to make sure that in 2032, we are a leader, not just for the general public, and not just for those who are visiting, but for everybody. By enabling persons to show up to a bus stop, to select the vehicle that they want from the Halo app, and to alert the bus driver electronically that somebody wants to get on at a specific stop, we make sure that nobody is left behind, my guide dog doesn't get his paws burnt in the summer, and I don't need to be left behind stranded by vehicles on Adelaide Street, on the Cultural Centre, the new Cross River Rail. Does not matter where you are in the world, problems are the same. Brisbane should be a leader, Brisbane can be a leader, and Brisbane is the city to do it. And I'm here to say, it's too long, we need to fix it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Velazquez. I'll now call on councillor Murphy to respond, please.
Well, thank you for coming to speak with us today, Mr Velazquez, and thank you for sharing your experience of catching public transport in Brisbane. I can say there's no one that's more disappointed than us on this side of the chamber that you weren't able to bring your guide dog today. We very much wanted to meet them, but unfortunately it was not to be. Our goal, Mr Velazquez, is to provide a world-class public transport network that is connected, reliable, and most importantly, inclusive. That is the Shrima Council's goal. And we're committed to making Brisbane an accessible city for people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds. And that means providing equitable and dignified ways for people to move freely between and throughout, public transport hubs, public spaces, entertainment precincts, and key destinations. It's a very big task, and it's one that we take incredibly seriously, and we are tackling it from a number of angles: public transport infrastructure, our fleet itself, and its onboard systems. So we maintain a network of almost 6,000 bus stops across the city, and we've been working through a significant pipeline of accessibility upgrades with those. Thanks to our investment in that programme from successive Lord Mayors, we now have over 90% of our passengers boarding from stops that are Disability Discrimination Act compliant. We've made significant progress in this space, much more than any other jurisdictions around the country, and we'll keep working on that. By far, the biggest step, though, that we have made in relation to accessibility has been on the Brisbane Metro project. And in 2019, we formed the Brisbane Metro Accessibility Working Group. That was a group that we brought together to co-design all elements of the project to create a class-leading vehicle, infrastructure works, and customer experience. And I will say, Mr Velazquez, it's the most significant co-design process that this council has ever undertaken, and it will absolutely transform the future of public transport in this country. When members of the working group could see the changes that they asked for on the Pilot Metro, many of them were moved to tears, and they said that it was the first time that they felt confident to use public transport in our city. The vehicle co-design process resulted in over 35 major design changes to the Metro, and that has now been...
Last year, I did a Churchill Fellowship, looking at public transport accessibility across 11 different nations, and we have Australian standards at the federal level, at the state level, at the local level, for transport accessibility. We have working groups, we have so many things that have been done, and yet so many people... Australia spends more than $1 billion annually on subsidies for me to catch buses, sorry, Ubers, for me to catch taxis. Co-design is very important, 100%, and I'm very glad that we're doing something about it. But, you know, it's very difficult to hear that because while I'm sure we are improving and we keep improving, you know, the contrast on certain things keeps failing. The height on certain things keep failing. Hidden disabilities keep getting missed. And I can keep going down the line in terms of driver training, it's not their fault, it's not your fault either. I'm just saying that it's very difficult when we keep trying to do something as people with disabilities, and we keep coming with solutions that the disability community has already asked for and has said, yes, we like it because we trial it in Sydney, as I said, we tried it in Melbourne, we tried it somewhere else, and yet, again, your response, as eloquent as it is, it's very difficult to hear because it doesn't tell me anything that I don't already know.
Thank you, Mr...
Aye.
Thank you, Mr Velazquez. Protocol, or Meetings Local Law, I'm sorry, means that I have to let councillor Murphy finish speaking and without interruption, so thank you very much for your points.
No, thank you, Mr Velazquez, and I certainly appreciate what you're saying. We know that there is no jurisdiction in the country that has got this right at the moment, and that all of us are playing catch-up to try and create that equitable and accessible future that everybody deserves. There are a few barriers, however, that I wanted to touch on in the time that I've got left. We know that your work as a Churchill Fellow and the work that you're doing in terms of transport accessibility with your app Halo is incredibly important, and that is all about leveraging technology to improve accessibility. I wanted to reflect on Metro because our view on that is very much aligned. We believe in using technology to leverage accessibility. We have so much powerful technology available at our fingertips, and often in transport, we don't use it or bring it to market quick enough to deliver those improvements to people that they deserve. Now, you mentioned customer travel information, or the lack of information as a barrier to using public transport, and we would absolutely agree. We have started to roll out things like onboard displays and audio announcements on our City Glider fleet, we are rolling them out to more in the fleet over the next few years progressively. And with Brisbane Metro, we will bring together a number of disparate information systems, so things like the Translink and GoCard data, the depot data, bus scheduling systems, and our network control centre into one place to be able to use that information, to help deliver that information to the customer. That will not only enhance reliability, but it will also mean the next generation of accessible information for our commuters. One of the big challenges that we have outside of Metro with the rest of the bus fleet is the level of technology on the buses themselves is not fit for purpose. So, many of our drivers still use paper route cards, they don't use intelligent systems like CONSAT and headway management systems. Those systems allow buses to effectively have a highly reliable GPS beacon, which can then be used to integrate with other solutions like your Halo app. So some of the enablers for the technological change that you're talking about are not yet finished on our fleet, and we are racing to catch up with where we need to be so that your app and many other technology enablers can improve accessibility on our bus fleet into the future. It's something that we're absolutely committed to do, we're committed to working with Translink, the state authority for public transport, on. We've provided some significant information and data to you to assist you in this process, I think, to this date. We are happy to continue working with you to bring your app to market here in Brisbane, and to work with Translink to make sure that that is integrated across South East Queensland. So, Mr Velazquez, I can reassure you that all of us here at Brisbane City Council are committed to advocating for people with a disability to be able to access our transport on a level basis.
Thank you, councillor Murphy, your time has expired. Thank you very much, Mr Velazquez, for coming in today. Thank you very much. Thank you. We now move to question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Civic Cabinet Chair of Infrastructure, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, last week you provided an update on the restoration of the Story Bridge, and council's plans to ensure this iconic bridge helps keep Brisbane moving for another 100 years. Could you please update the chamber on the latest development since last week's update?
Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and can I thank councillor Toomey for the question. I know that councillor Toomey takes a keen interest in both the history of the city and also the Story Bridge as one of the most significant parts of that history. Now, as councillors should know, council has invested around $78 million already to restore the Story Bridge since 2019. However, the more work we did, the more work we found we needed to do. And as so often the case, when dealing with heritage structures, there is a lot more to it than meets the eye. What started as a new layer of paint some years ago, with repairs what was initially estimated to be around 30% of the bridge, ended up being a full stripping of the paint with significant structural repairs. Those who paid close attention will note that council, as part of that process, would create full airlock encapsulations of the work zones to protect both workers, residents, and visitors, to create a safe environment. Because one of the most concerning elements was that some of the paint used in the earlier repainting of the Story Bridge was lead-based and did have risk to residents, visitors, and workers. The safety of the community is not negotiable, and that meant the work was difficult, our workers had to be diligent, and was very time-consuming. The extensive repairs revealed a raft of complexities that can only be addressed with a comprehensive restoration. As we have done more work, the costs associated with the bridge's restoration have grown well beyond the initial anticipated costs. So what is the plan forward? Council is seeking funds through the federal government's Major Projects Business Case Fund to deliver a detailed business case for full renewal of the Story Bridge. This will also determine a total proposed cost. We believe that a full restoration will expand the bridge's serviceable lifespan by another 80 to 100 years. Noting that this will be an extensive restoration process, we've taken clear steps to ensure that we get the best outcome we can to secure the future of this icon of the Brisbane skyline. We've already written to the federal infrastructure minister, Catherine King, to seek support through that MP BCF to create the detailed business case, and both the Lord Mayor and I have raised it with her personally. Following this, we've also sent letters to both the Prime Minister and the Premier, seeking their support. However, today, I can advise the council that we have also made another announcement. The landmark announcement today is that we have appointed Mr Nigel Shamia AM to be the Chair of the Story Bridge Restoration. He will be providing a roadmap to progress the Story Bridge's restoration. Mr Shamia led the restoration of Brisbane City Hall, of the Anzac Square restoration, both of which were great successes. He is also involved in the BSA, councillor Davis's chair of that body, and he is well-known to many in this chamber and is recognised as a friend and contributor to our city. With decades of experience in major infrastructure projects, and the significant additional experiences as both a company director and chair, Mr Shamia brings a whole range of points of view to this project. It's important to also note that he was also the former Chair of the 2018 Gold Coast Commonwealth Games Corporation, which will also identify that the Story Bridge will play a key role in how we as a city present ourselves to the world in 2032. Mr Shamia will create a report that will include the state of the bridge and council's historical stewardship of the Story Bridge, global case studies of other historical bridge restoration projects, and options to fund the Story Bridge's renewal, including support from other levels of government. It is absolutely crucial that we get this right, and I believe that Mr Shamia is the right person to lead that. He has graciously accepted this position and has made himself available for questions from the media today, I understand. As one of the most important transport links in our city, as a national icon, we look forward to working with Mr Shamia to ensure that we get the restoration the Story Bridge deserves. As we know, more than 100,000... While we talk about the heritage elements, it's also important to remember, as we conclude, that this bridge is a key transport link within our inner city, carrying more than 100,000 motor vehicles per day, and it's part of our history, but also with all this work to come, part of our future as well.
Further questions? Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Standards, councillor Sarah Hutton. Chair, I was shocked and so upset to read the news last week during Homelessness Week that council compliance officers threw out a person's tent and belongings from Carilpa Point Park and did not allow them to retrieve when they asked to do so. Chair, can you tell the council how many tents and personal belongings has council packed up and thrown away from people sleeping rough this year?
Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair, and I would like to thank councillor Collier for the question. Can I say the statement that councillor Collier has suggested, that our PSLO officers and our City Standards officers are throwing out tents, is completely incorrect. So I do want to set the record straight.
Just one moment, please, councillor Hutton. All councillors know that you are not to speak while another councillor is speaking. Please show that courtesy. You have asked your question, now please hear the answer. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I do want to put on the record just how the Labor state government have left behind the people of this city. It is disgraceful...
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor Collier.
Despite what councillor Hutton thinks, on relevance, the question is about how many tents and personal belongings have council thrown out. So I ask that you bring the chair back to the question.
Councillor Collier has five minutes to answer the question. Please proceed, councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair, and I do want to acknowledge that councillor Collier is asking about the removal of tents. Let me be very clear here, that our council's public liaison officers regularly visit homeless people across our city and try and service them with accommodation via the state government. The officers that you're referring to last week had engaged with many of the homeless people at Carilpa Point. Now, I do want to acknowledge that when we do have the opportunity to engage with these people, the primary focus is to connect them with services, and this is a really important point. Our officers are faced with a really big challenge every single day, and let me acknowledge that our city council commits $4 million of its annual budget to supporting the issue of homelessness. Now, it's important to note that when we do acknowledge that a tent has been left behind, there is a process involved with acknowledging that the tent has been abandoned, and there is a significant sign that is placed there.
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Massies. Do not call out, that is one caution. Councillor Collier, point of order.
Just on relevance, I'm reading from an ABC media article, it says, "The council says the tent was taken..."
Councillor Collier, that is not a point of order, please.
So I ask that you...
Councillor Collier, I'm ruling that that is not a point of order, please.
I haven't finished my point of order, Chair.
She's answering the question, you've had one go at answering...
On relevance, Chair.
You've asked your question, it's being answered.
Point of order, Chair.
That is not a point of order.
Point of order.
Councillor Collier.
Given the council's statements in the media, I believe that councillor Hutton has misled this chamber.
Councillor Collier, it is not to be...
And I ask you to reprimand her.
Your question is not to be debated, it is not a point of order, please resume your seat. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. Our council works delicately here in order to help vulnerable people as best as we can whilst managing the public's expectation around public parks and spaces. The reporting we saw last week failed to understand the complexity of the issue and the role that council has in preventing homelessness while ensuring public parks are accessible or just in general, sorry, or just the general facts of what actually occurred. Instead, it sees the opportunity for a headline during Homelessness Week, which is very unfortunate for these vulnerable people. Now, I do want to be very clear that our PSLO officers, as well as our City Standards officers, really work sensitively around these spaces. They are very... It is very frustrating that we continue to see the Labor opposition here slam us about homelessness when they could simply speak with their colleagues down the road about genuinely putting housing on the market for these vulnerable people. Instead, they come into this place slamming our officers...
Point of order. Point of order, councillor Collier.
Chair, on relevance, the question is about what Brisbane City Council is doing.
Thank you, councillor Collier.
I ask that you bring the chair back to the question.
Thank you, councillor Collier.
And come clean and tell us how many tents have been taken by council.
Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a very...
Councillors, stop calling out across the chamber.
As I said, Chair, we have a very clear and routine procedure that allows us to identify potentially abandoned tents. We leave notices on the tents so that people can let us know if they are in use, and we also check with the Department of Housing to see if they are engaging with anyone living in this tent. Now, it's a sad state of affairs that the opposition seem to think that housing and homelessness...
Councillor Hutton, your time has expired.
Thank you, Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Civic Cabinet Chair for Transport, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, can you update the chamber on recent success in grant funding to deliver on the Shrima Council's plan to keep Brisbane moving?
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, thanks to councillor Parry for the question. Well, the Shrima Council is dedicated to keeping Brisbane moving, and our goal is to encourage more residents to embrace active transport. We want to expand our network of pathways and bikeways to enable residents and visitors to move around our city easily and safely. As one of the nation's fastest-growing capital cities, we are experiencing rapid growth. We've got around 275 residents arriving to this city each and every week. The state government's own projections show Brisbane will grow by 14,000 people each year to more than 1.5 million by 2041. Growth is a big challenge for our city, and keeping Brisbane moving, to keep Brisbane moving, it's critical that we invest in projects and infrastructure that can cater for future capacity. Growth also gives us a chance to plan and deliver projects that ensure people of all ages and abilities can move around our city. However, like many other constructors, we have faced rising costs and other market challenges in respect to delivering these projects, and as a result, we have changed the way we approach delivery of active transport infrastructure, recognising the benefits of more collaborative approaches and funding strategies. And following a record spend last year, Madam Chair, we're now shifting our focus onto advancing the design of several projects over the next 12 months. Some of this design work will be conducted through the state government's Cycle Network Local Government Grants Programme, and I can advise, Madam Chair, we've had a lot of success in this round with several key projects receiving funding for both design and construction. We are investing in new lighting in targeted locations across the Moreton Bay Cycle Way and Kedram Brook Bike Way. More than a kilometre of lighting will be constructed at Fig Tree Point Park in Lotha and along Kedram Brook from South Pine Road to Borghinia Avenue. Design work will also be undertaken for lighting in Curlew Park, Finkst Road Park, and along 17 Mile Rocks Bike Way. These projects will make it significantly easier for those wishing to ride after work to get home sooner and safer. And that's not all, Madam Chair, several crucial missing links have also received design funding this year. We know that projects like Lambert Road... We know that projects like Lambert Road, Witten Street and Sylvan Road are all highly sought after by the community, and I'm pleased to share that in addition to council's own funding, we have secured design funding for all of these projects. Sylvan Road is of particular interest to council, which partly ties into our $45 million upgrade of the intersections of Croydon Street at Milton Road and Sylvan Road itself. This will not only help reduce congestion but will greatly increase the safety of the existing bike lanes along Sylvan Road, and it's only been made possible by the record investment in active transport by the Shrinna Council. And it's disappointing, but never surprising, that the Greens have been very critical of council despite this investment. Councillor Chongwa was very excited weeks ago when she saw these projects had received funding in this year's budget. She welcomed the funding and talked about how it was long overdue. She mentioned that the design should be backed up by actual construction. But did the construction of the Sylvan Road Bike Way appear in the Greens' 101 election commitments? No, it didn't. In fact, there wasn't even a commitment for any further design work. We know that the story unravels because Greens never make firm commitments on bike ways. They welcome the bike way, they say that it's long overdue, and then ultimately what they do is they campaign against it, Madam Chair. And that was my experience during councillor Sri's time with the Dornoch Terrace Bike Way. He begged us to deliver the Dornoch Terrace Bike Way in his community. He said the community needed it for safety. "Come and build this bike way," he cried. And then we went in good faith and we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars undertaking detailed design and community consultation, and then councillor Sri turned around and he was against the bike way, and to this day, it has not been built. The Greens will always claim that they are the biggest supporters of active transport. Nobody's bigger than the Greens, they'll say. But when it comes to Dornoch Terrace, they beat a very hasty retreat, Madam Chair. When it comes to Sylvan Road, we know they didn't commit to its design or its construction. Now they're claiming credit for the fact that it's on the list for design, but I am confident that if the project gets controversial in the community, as these projects often do, they will do what they did with Dornoch Terrace. They will run a million miles from this project and they will say, "Oh, we can't support it because the Brisbane City Council stuffed it up." That is what they always do, Madam Chair. If they're not claiming credit for our work, they are saying that we did it the wrong way, and only if it was done the right way, then of course they could support it as the local council. So we will wait with bated breath to see what councillor Chongwa will do when it comes to the bike way on Sylvan Road. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Massey?
Thank you, Chair. My question is for councillor Hutton. Last week, a homeless rough sleeper's tent was taken and removed by Brisbane City Council during homelessness week, leaving him without even the barest, simple shelter, a tent. Public space liaison officers, of course, do incredible work. However, it's clear that a 48-hour notice and a sign this big, no bigger than a business card, is not sufficient notice to enable people who have nothing to stop their tents being removed. So today I am asking, will you commit to increasing the notification period to rough sleepers across the city to at least 96 hours before their tents are removed and assumed abandoned to ensure a situation like this never happens again?
Councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Chair, and I would like to thank councillor Massey for the question. Now, I would like to get the record very, very clear. There was a sign put up onto the tent in which she has described the individual, and then when the tent was removed, MICA projects-
Point of order, councillor Johnson?
Last week, Madam Chairman, you made a ruling that you couldn't say she. So is that ruling applied to me and councillor Hutton?
So relieved to get interrupted by that.
But getting back to the question, the importance of the question.
Now councillor Massey was ref-
And just before you go on, councillor Hutton, I am going to remind councillors that you need to remain quiet and show suitable meeting conduct while another councillor is on their feet speaking, please. Councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Chair, and as I was saying, councillor Massey was referring to an individual, and when that individual returned to the place, to the park, there was MICA projects there ready to connect them with housing solutions. Now, I, our teams work really, really hard, together with the Department of Housing, to find suitable accommodation for these individuals. Now, I will just run through again the standard practice.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor Massey.
Relevance, the question isn't an explanation of what PSLO officers do, it's asking if you will extend the notification period.
Thank you, councillor Massey. Councillor Hutton is answering the question, has several more minutes to do so. Councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Chair. Now, I do want to acknowledge that our PSLO officers connect each and every day with those sleeping rough, and our ultimate aim is to get these people into housing. Now, like those on the opposite side, they may be comfortable with people living in a tent. We on this side of the chamber aim for more. We aim for more in this city. We want homeless people to have a house, to have a roof over their head, to have security. And so to allow people to camp in a park, I think we can do better, and this is what our people-
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Massey.
We don't need an explanation on this, like-
Councillor Massey, this is not for you to debate. You have asked your question, please let the councillor answer it. Councillor Hutton?
It's really interesting, Madam Chair, that those on the opposite side are comfortable with people living in tents, and we are not. We are not comfortable, and that's why I'm really proud that our administration is investing $4 million in housing and homelessness to give the support that we can at this level of government. Now, we might just go back a little while, and I remember about this time last year, our Lord Mayor put on record our support for the Pinken Bar facility. That was 500 beds that could give support to homeless people today.
Point of order, councillor Collier?
On relevance?
Thank you, councillor Collier. Councillor Hutton is answering the question.
This does not form any part of the question that councillor Massey has asked.
I don't uphold your point of order.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Massey.
Who knows if I'm allowed to do this, but would councillor Hutton take a question?
No, councillor Massey, you have asked your question.
Well, you haven't, you're not answering this question, so would you answer one?
Councillor Wines, thank you, I do have this. I do not uphold your point of order, councillor Massey. Councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Chair. It's very interesting when we start to talk about the different approaches that people in this chamber take towards homelessness, we start to get quite aggressive from across the other side. It's very, very interesting, and like I said, we aim for more. We want people in this city to have a roof over their head, but not everyone in this chamber does. So I just really want to confirm that when our PSLO officers attend these sites, they engage with everyone there. They really try and connect them with support services, including the Department of Housing.
Point of order, councillor Collier?
I believe that councillor Massey, on relevance, I believe that councillor Massey has been referring to compliance officers, which is under the remit of councillor Hutton's-
Councillor Collier, you are not able to get up and start debating this. Thank you very much. So I do not uphold your point of order, and you do know the procedure. I will start to caution you if you continue to do this. Councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Chair. So our officers leave a very clear note if they think a tent is being unused, and they suggest that you contact council within 48 hours. The notice is also emailed to any community organization that they have their details on the tent, should they wish to recover any of the tents within the 24-hour period. Council also checks with the Department of Housing if they are currently engaged with anyone in the identified tent. Where the Department of Housing confirms they have no record of a person in the tent and council receives no notification from any occupant or charity, the tent is presumed abandoned, and in the interest of public safety and amenity, the tent is disposed of. We keep the tents and we wait for them to be claimed. Now, that is within a 48-hour period. Due to biohazard risks, the tents that are not suitable for reusing or distribution are obviously disposed of. Where people are occupying tents, alternative living arrangements are provided by the Queensland government as part of their daily site visits. I really want to put on record, Madam Chair, just the extraordinary efforts that our PSLO and our compliance officers undertake in these sites. They are very, very sensitive to the nature of these vulnerable people, and they are doing their very, very best. But like we have seen here, the coalition of chaos over there seem to think it's okay for people to be living in tents. This side of the chamber, we expect more. We want to see these homeless and vulnerable people staying in accommodation, to have a roof over their head, and I think that is a great, I think we should all be aspiring for more, and I think we need to be very realistic that within our local government, we are committing significant amounts of time, energy and funding towards homelessness. Now, down the road, the state Labor government have failed. They have failed these people, and as the Lord Mayor put on record some 12 months ago-
Your time has expired.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there further questions? Councillor Atwood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Civic Cabinet Chair for Infrastructure, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, since 2010, we have partnered with the federal government to improve safety in some of Brisbane's worst suburban crash corridors through the Black Spot Program. Can you please advise the chamber on any barriers to this partnership, which is focused on keeping Brisbane moving?
Councillor Wines?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I thank councillor Atwood for her question and her ongoing interest in ensuring that we have a safe and efficient transport network? Can I begin by providing the chamber an orientation about what Black Spots are? Black Spots are a federally funded program where intersections and road upgrades can be delivered within 12 months for a cost of less than $2 million. That is the nature of the program. It has been, as councillor Atwood identifies, a longstanding project, a longstanding program of the federal government. Now, typically, this council submits between three and five projects and has historically or typically received 100% of everything that we submit. This is for a range of reasons, including our very high benefit-cost ratio in these and our well-established ability to deliver the projects. Last financial year, 2024, our Black Spot delivery program included Kitty Hawk Avenue and Anala Avenue Anala, Johnson Road in Forest Lake, Bay Terrace and Chestnut Street in Winham, and Bennetts Road, McCrossden Avenue, Crown Street in Norman Park. In financial year 2425, we received a letter, in anticipation of that financial year, we received a letter from the Minister for Infrastructure, the Honourable Catherine King. I will table this letter, but on it, in it, I should say, it was received by this council on 22nd of May 2024, and in the letter it says, "In addition to the R2R funding commitment, the Australian Government has increased funding to the," I'll just slow down here, "has increased funding to the Black Spot Program, and from 1 July 2021 will also have another program." Now, the Black Spot Program increased from $110 million a year to $150 million a year. In response to that, we were encouraged to submit more projects to that program. When we were advised which projects were successful, we received only two: Winham Road and Southgate Avenue in Cannon Hill, and Milton Road and Nelly Streets in Nunda. Now, why would that change be when we've been encouraged to submit more? Well, part of the process is we must submit our proposals to the state government, and then the state government makes an assessment of which ones are worthy. And the state government at that point gate-kept many of our projects and did not afford them to the federal government for consideration. What happens there? Well, our communities lose out. So which projects did the state government deem unworthy? The upgrade of Breakfast Creek Road and Edmundston Road in Bowen Hills, which sees two crashes a year for the last five years. James Street, Doggett Street and Robertson Street, Fortitude Valley, that has, again, 11 crashes over five years, more than two crashes a year. St Paul's Terrace, Gibbs Terrace, Kenego Street, Fortitude Valley, 13 crashes between 2018 and 2023. St Paul's Terrace, again, Quarry Street, Warren Street and Gothas Street, eight crashes between 2018 and 2023. Winham Road and Beverley Street, Morning Side, which has seen five crashes a year between 2018 and 2023. And Kestles Road and Orange Grove Road, Salisbury, six crashes between 2018 and 2023. A total of 53 incidents have occurred at those six intersections between 2018 and 2023, and all six Black Spots were rejected, even though they met the federal government's funding criteria, even though we'd been encouraged to submit them, even though our understanding was that they would be supported, except our own Queensland government did not propose The state government's decision to reject these six Black Spot projects once again comes despite the federal government's record commitment and significant increase to the program. Now, I'd like to take a moment to compare who did get the support of the state government. So as I say, Queens, excuse me, Brisbane City, of the whole national program, received 6% of the statewide commitment, or $1 million, to be precise, $1.84 million. In the previous five years, we were typically at somewhere between $2.4 and $6.2 million. However, our cousins to the south, in the heavily Labor-dominated and clearly an area of concern Logan City Council, they got $5.97 million for Logan City alone, or the equivalent of 34% of all Queensland's funding this financial year. You can read about it, well, that appears to be the electorate of a number of, must be endangered but senior state MPs.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Griffiths?
Thank you. My question is to Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, your LMP team supported the demolition of the Tarragony Bowls Club on land zone sport and recreation to allow the building of a six-story apartment building. There is a two-story council community hall in the bushland right next door to the new apartment building, and I know council officers were approached to remove the top story of this building to create better views for the apartments. Before the 2024 council election, I was informed by the Chair of Lifestyle that this would never happen. Yesterday, I was informed by council officers that council is now demolishing the second floor of the community hall, which officers have informed me is structurally sound. Lord Mayor, do you support the demolition of the top story of this community hall rather than its restoration?
Lord Mayor?
Thank you for the question, councillor Griffiths. Look, I'm not, I haven't been briefed on this particular issue, so happy to find out what's happening there and provide a response.
Further questions? Councillor Adaman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of Transport, councillor Murphy. Since opening, the Breakfast Creek Bridge has seen patronage beyond even our most optimistic expectations. Can you please update the chamber on our investment in keeping Brisbane moving and advise, if you're aware, of any alternative approaches?
Councillor Murphy?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and thanks to you, councillor Adaman, for the question. And I know how passionate councillor Adaman is about active transport in his ward. He's always supporting Kenworth South State School in their bigger and better things each and every year in the Active School Travel Awards. So it is fantastic, isn't it, councillor Adaman, that we have achieved so much with the Breakfast Creek Ywogara Green Bridge? The first of the green bridges delivered by the Shrinna Council, 700 metres of new active transport infrastructure for our city. This now forms part of a seamless two-kilometre length between Hamilton and Newstead. As I mentioned, this was the first bridge of the $550 million Bridges for Brisbane commitment, and it is working to take more cars off the road and to provide more choice when it comes to travel. And it's true, councillor Adaman, the patronage has been beyond our wildest expectations. We've had over 3,000 pedestrians, cyclists and scooter users use the bridge each day, double what the business case forecast was of 1,300 trips, and just this month, we passed over half a million trips taken on the bridge. And in June, we saw a maximum of 5,000 trips being taken in a single day, just 1,000 below the forecast of the Kangaroo Point Bridge. So it is absolutely unbelievable, and we are now considering, reconsidering how we develop the business cases for these assets because- the business cases for these assets because they seem to be wrong, councillor Adaman, but in a very good way. We are, of course, required to use the state's B S T M, the Brisbane Strategic Transport Model, but the B S T M is B U S T E D, busted, at least when it comes to active transport. It does not appropriately account for active transport-induced demand and there clearly needs to be a serious rethink on the model on which many private organisations, the state government itself and Brisbane City Council are doing business cases for active transport infrastructure. Put simply, the numbers are undercooked, which means our future bridges will likely provide a much higher benefit cost ratio than what we have had looked at previously. And this goes for Kangaroo Point as well. Council was expecting around 6,100 trips per day, taking 84,000 cars off the road every year. Going off the figures from Breakfast Creek, this could go up to 10,000 or even 15,000 trips per day, Madam Chair. Statistics like that would put Kangaroo Point Bridge into the top five bikeways by daily trips in the world. According to EcoCount, the world's chief authority on bikeway count data, the busiest bikeway is actually, funnily enough, the Sevastopol Boulevard bikeway, but it's not in Crimea. councillor Adams might be able to tell you, it is in Paris, France, and it sees approximately 13,000 trips every day. So if we beat our projections in the same way that we did with Breakfast Creek, we could soon have the most popular stretch of bikeway in the world. And it will be the Shrinna Council that brings this vision to life when Kangaroo Point Bridge opens later this year. We are continuing to invest in new bridges while we are refurbishing our old ones. Compare that to the state government, which has no plans for any new river crossings in Brisbane. And it doesn't get any better for their council colleagues either, Chair. We remember that three years ago, the former councillor Cook wanted council to investigate the Bilemba to Tenerife Green Bridge, seriously. But what councillor Cook failed to tell the chamber was that the state government had already completed a report commissioned in 2015. And what did that report reveal? That the bridge would need 30 metres of clearance above the Brisbane River and would block out the sun. By contrast, the Karuba Bridge is nine metres, the Captain Cook Bridge is 12 metres and the Goodwill Bridge is 13 metres. The only other inner-city bridge with clearance that high is the Story Bridge. It would be more than half a kilometre long and require an aggressive 5% grade, a flat surface every 15 metres on ramped areas to be DDA compliant, hardly an accessible bridge for families, the elderly and those living with a disability. And the Greens aren't much better, Chair. They're still all over the shop on the Tuwong to West End Bridge. We all remember when councillor Sri and Amy McMahon campaigned against that bridge for the loss of green space on either side. And we've heard from other councillors here in this space who are not fans of buses on that bridge. Said at the chamber before, Madam Chair, during this year's election, the Greens had their opportunity to tell this chamber, to tell the people of the city of Brisbane what green bridges they would build if they were elected. And they said they would build nothing. They actually said they would build nothing. And so, not to Wong to West End, not to Lush to West End.
Further questions? councillor Johnston.
Yes, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, due to your council's decision to close the Walter Taylor Bridge for 17 days, buses, including the 105, 108, 599 and 598, cannot cross the bridge to take residents to essential services, work and recreation. Instead, bus users will be dumped at a rail station with stairs and no universal access. Do you think it is acceptable that the elderly, disabled and parents with prams do not have safe, universal access to public transport due to your council's decision to shut the Walter Taylor Bridge?
Lord Mayor.
That's an interesting question. What I heard there is that the rail station wasn't DDA compliant. I also heard that councillor Johnston is against us performing maintenance on the bridge. Now, we know in the past that...
Point of order. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation. Lord Mayor.
We know in the past that there's been trouble in paradise with the state Labor member for the area wanting a new bridge, campaigning for a new bridge, but refusing to put a single cent towards a new bridge, making it someone else's problem. But councillor Johnston is against a new bridge. She's made that very clear. She's against a new bridge for Walter Taylor.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'm not interested in the politics, I'm interested...
councillor Adams. So it's not the debate now?
I'm sorry, are you going to do something about that?
No, councillor Johnston.
All right. So, Madam Chairman, my point of order is, my question is about residents who cannot access bus and public transport services because of the Lord Mayor's bridge closure. It's not about a new bridge.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. The Lord Mayor is answering the question. Lord Mayor.
It's extraordinary because, as I was pointing out, some people have proposed a new bridge, including the Labor state member, proposed it without any funding, even though he was the Minister for Transport and had bridges in his portfolio. Councillor Johnston has campaigned against a new bridge and so if you're relying on the existing 80-year-old bridge, what do you have to do with it? You have to maintain it. And that's exactly what we've been doing for many, many years. That's exactly what we plan to do in September, yet councillor Johnston's against that too. So can't build a new bridge, can't maintain the existing one. What is it that she supports, Madam Chair?
Sorry, Lord Mayor.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation. Lord Mayor.
It's quite extraordinary that councillor Johnston continues to complain that nothing ever apparently happens in her ward, but she complains when anything ever happens in her ward. And I think people are seeing through this. It is petty politics, it is opposition for opposition's sake, and the reality is, this work needs to be done. Now, if councillor Johnston had questions about this particular project, that appeared in the budget, this project appeared in the budget, she could well have asked those questions at the Budget Information Session. She could have found out any information that she needed to know at that, but no. What it appears she wants to do now is to scare the community, to unnecessarily oppose essential maintenance and...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation. Lord Mayor.
To unnecessarily oppose essential maintenance, which keeps...
Point of order, Madam Chair. Claim to be misrepresented.
I haven't called you yet.
Oh, wow.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation. Lord Mayor.
Which keeps the bridge operating as it should. Now, this is not something that has to happen every year, it's not something that even has to happen every five years. The last closure of this scale that happened was 31 years ago. And at that time, we replaced a wooden deck with a concrete deck on the bridge to give it extra life and we're doing some substantial works on this bridge to give it that new life. And so what we're doing is removing the entire surface, we're improving and upgrading the deck, we are dealing with the joints, we are doing a whole range of other maintenance works on the bridge. And we're doing this to give it the extra life that this bridge deserves. And so this is also something that cannot be done while traffic is using the bridge. This is something that I verified just today with one of our bridge experts, the manager of that section. And he was specifically asked...
Sorry, Lord Mayor. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chairman, this question was about the decision of Brisbane City Council to dump bus residents and users at a train station with stairs and no universal access. It's a genuine question, it's a serious question, and I would ask the Lord Mayor to address it.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. The Lord Mayor is answering the question.
Well, Madam Chair, that's a question that should be addressed to the state government who are responsible for DDA access at their rail stations. But what I can tell you is that the work on the Walter Taylor Bridge needs to be done. And of all the different opportunities to do that work, during the September school holidays, the best opportunity. I acknowledge that this will cause a disruption to people, it will change travel patterns, there is no doubt about that, but the work has to be done and the work cannot be done while the bridge is open to traffic. So the opportunity just to keep one lane open and do the work on the other lane, it is not there, that is not possible. This kind of work cannot be done under those situations. And so the bridge has to be closed, we're closing it during a period that is the school holidays, we're closing it during a period where the weather conditions are more likely to be optimal for this kind of work and that's not always the case. So if it was at the Christmas period, the Christmas holiday period, we know the kind of weather that we get there, hot and wet, that would potentially cause the project to take even longer. And so this work does have to be done and it would be nice to get councillor Johnston on board with essential maintenance work that will help keep an asset that serves her community alive for longer.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, your time has expired. councillor Johnston, your points of misrepresentation.
Yes, on the first point of misrepresentation, Madam Chairman, the Lord Mayor stated that I was opposed to maintenance on the Walter Taylor Bridge. That is a demonstrably false statement. My public statements have been, and I quote, "We all want a safe and reliable bridge and maintenance works to the bridge joints and resurfacing are critically important." On number two, the Lord Mayor dishonestly and falsely stated that I was opposed to essential maintenance works on the Walter Taylor Bridge.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Wines.
I appreciate that people are allowed to provide explanations, but this appears to be a whole speech. Could I seek a ruling on the brevity required for these types of comments that councillor Johnston's making?
Thank you, councillor Wines, there were several points of misrepresentation. councillor Johnston.
Thank you. On point number two, the Lord Mayor stated that I was opposed to maintenance on the Walter Taylor Bridge. In all my public statements, I have said that we want a safe and reliable bridge and maintenance works to the bridge joints and resurfacing are critically important. With respect to the Lord Mayor's third dishonest and false statement about my public comments, the Lord Mayor said that I was opposed to maintenance works on the Walter Taylor Bridge. In addition to positive public statements about the importance of the work, I have also stated that maintaining the bridge is important. And for the fourth comment, the Lord Mayor said I was opposed to essential maintenance works on the Walter Taylor Bridge. This is a dishonest and false statement and my public statements have clearly, clearly and repeatedly said how important maintenance works on the Walter Taylor Bridge is. And I think it demonstrates what a dishonest person the Lord Mayor of Brisbane is.
councillor Wines, I caution you not to use that language, thank you. That now ends question time. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of 5th of August 2024.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 5th of August 2024, be adopted.
Seconded.
As been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor, that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 5th of August 2024, be adopted. Is there any debate, Lord Mayor?
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I ask that items A and D are taken seriadum for debate and voting purposes.
A and D together for seriadum and voting? Thank you. Lord Mayor.
I'll make some other comments and then we'll go into A and D first, if that's all right, and then we can do B and C second. Well, what we heard just now from councillor Johnston is classic councillor Johnston. It is the story of her entire political career. Opposed things whenever they are proposed in her ward and then complained that nothing ever happens in her ward. And we've seen it over and over and over and over again. And it is really quite extraordinary and she's been caught out this time and she doesn't like being called out on this behaviour, but it is disingenuous of her to suggest she supports the maintenance when she has been leading the charge against the maintenance occurring in the way that it needs to occur.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation. Lord Mayor.
We've also seen, in addition to the coalition of chaos that has formed to our right, there's a new coalition that's developed as well. And that is the coalition between the Greens and councillor Johnston, where councillor Johnston's acting as their pseudo-leader and adviser on issues. And we know why that is because...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim.
Okay, it's not pseudo, it's actually their adviser and leader. Because the Greens operate the same way that councillor Johnston does. They say they want everything to happen and then they oppose everything when it is proposed. And we've heard examples, councillor Murphy has called them out on this today, that is really quite disingenuous and quite disappointing because it's all about the politics. Everything they say is just to win a vote, never about an outcome, everything they say. And councillor Johnston and the Greens should be ashamed of themselves for this kind of tactic. Walter Taylor Bridge, you know, these things are never easy when you're doing iconic heritage bridge maintenance work like this. And these are not new assets. This is a bridge that is well into its 80s and needs substantial work. The last time we did something of this scale was 31 years ago. There has been obviously ongoing maintenance work done to the bridge. There was a shorter closure in 2013. There have been other works ongoing. So we've always done the work that needs to be done. This work needs to be done. The expert bridge engineers and managers that plan and deliver these projects have confirmed that this work cannot be done while the bridge remains partially open. It cannot be done. And so councillor Johnston is, you know, really quite causing some troubles here when she campaigns against the bridge maintenance work in the community, when she stirs up community angst about the bridge maintenance work that needs to happen.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation. Lord Mayor.
And so I would simply say to councillor Johnston, get on board with the programme. This is an important asset for your residents, the people you represent too, councillor Johnston. This work needs to be done and it would be best if we do it in the September school holiday period, that is the optimum time that has been put forward. And it would be great if councillor Johnston could get in, on board with this important maintenance work. Madam Chair, as I always do, I want to talk about the lighting up of assets. We know that last night, our assets were lit up green to celebrate the Eka, which officially kicked up off on Saturday and will run through until Sunday, the 18th of August. Tonight, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Tropical Dome and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in red to celebrate the 110th anniversary of Australian Red Cross. And thank you to councillor Parry, to councillor Adaman and also councillor Wolf, who came along to the civic reception that we had today for Red Cross. I know that they appreciated that and people came from near and far. Our local branches were well represented, but we also had some people that came up from the Gold Coast and even one dedicated volunteer who came down from Tully for the event. But they are very dedicated and it's the reason why Australian Red Cross has been going strong for 110 years and they do fantastic work in our community for which we are grateful for. On Wednesday, our assets, or tomorrow night, our assets will be lit up in green again for the Eka. On Thursday, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in white, orange and green to recognise India's Independence Day, commemorating 78 years of Indian self-government following the end of British rule in 1947. On Friday, all of our assets will be lit up in purple to support the Bullying No Way National Week of Action, which is Australia's key bullying prevention initiative and connects schools and communities to find workable solutions to prevent bullying. Well, we've been very busy welcoming new citizens in recent times. Well, we've been very busy welcoming new citizens in recent times. Last Monday night, we welcomed over 500 people in City Hall. On Saturday, we had two ceremonies and welcomed around 1,200 new citizens in City Hall. Last night, another 500-plus people. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the role you do in being the emcee for those events, and it was great to see those new citizens being inducted, and it was particularly great to see the number of Kiwis that have decided to become Aussies, councillor Marks. And so there's, in the past, there's been, you know, free travel between Australia and New Zealand. Kiwis can stay here as long as they like, and many of them opted not to get citizenship. And that's changed recently, and we've seen a great take-up of Australian citizenship, and that's a wonderful thing. So welcome to all of our new citizens, and a special welcome to the Kiwis as well, who have now become Aussies. Another milestone we've had just recently is the QPAC Melbourne Street Green has been completed as part of the Brisbane Metro project, and so work there includes a new permanent stage, a lawned area landscaping, upgrades to lighting and audio systems as well. And this is something that we were doing as part of Brisbane Metro and the works around the Cultural Centre station as well. Now, on to item A and D, the first two that we'll deal with. Item A deals with the lease of premises for public toilets in Brunswick Street Mall Fortitude Valley, obviously one of our key night-time precincts and entertainment precincts. Public toilets are very important in this precinct and very well-used, and in great demand from the community. And so this particular item leases a premises so that we can create some new public toilets in Brunswick Street Mall, and we previously provided public toilets at 275 Brunswick Street. That lease expired in 2022. We were not able to renew the lease as the property was being sold. In the interim, we provided public toilets via a modular solution in the middle of the mall. This option was always intended to be temporary, and what we're doing today is proposing a new facility that will give us some longevity. And so this lease is for an initial period of 10 years with a further five-year option. Item D relates to the adoption of a new five-year statement of strategic intent for Queensland Urban Utilities and updates to other policies. The previous statement of strategic intent has recently expired, and a new statement for the five-year period from the 1st of July 2024 to the 30th of June 2029 has been prepared by Urban Utilities. This is required to be endorsed by the shareholding councils, of which we are one. We are one of five. The statement as set out in the papers includes "UUU's operating objectives, purpose and vision, strategic priorities and risk, forecast infrastructure investment and five-year financial forecasts, together with supporting key financial metrics." As councillors will be aware, Urban Utilities operates water and sewage facilities in the five local government areas, including Brisbane, Ipswich, Scenic Rim, Lockyer Valley and Somerset, a region that services close to 1.6 million customers. The statement before us will provide safe and efficient water services every day, building trust and to help shape and grow our future as Urban Utilities' critical strategic priorities. It also outlines a range of critical KPIs in the areas of safety, public health, environment, experience and value. Urban Utilities publishes performance data across a range of metrics through its annual report and annual performance report, both of which are provided to their regulator, namely the state government, and they are also published as well. With the new statement of strategic intent being prepared for endorsement, UU, along with representatives from the shareholding councils, have also reviewed and proposed amendments to these policies to ensure fair and predictable returns to residents. Urban Utilities is the custodian of our water and sewage assets. The residents of Brisbane are their majority shareholders. They have a very important role, and I wish the management and board well in continuing to fulfil this responsibility over the next five years and beyond. I also want to take the opportunity to thank the many dedicated crews and teams from Urban Utilities working hard on frontline services to deliver these critical and essential services and upgrades to the people of Brisbane every day.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further debate? Councillor Collier? Oh, sorry. Councillor, your three misrepresentations.
Yes, on the first point of misrepresentation, the Lord Mayor stated that I was opposed to essential maintenance works on the Walter-Taylor Bridge. In fact, in all my public statements and private statements, I've just checked, I have indicated how important it is to undertake maintenance works on the Walter-Taylor Bridge. The second point was the Lord Mayor dishonestly stated that I was the leader of the Greens and an adviser to the Greens. I am, in fact, the councillor for Tennyson Ward and an independent. I have been an independent now for 14 years, and it is very disrespectful that the Lord Mayor fails to recognise that. And thirdly, the Lord Mayor again stated that I had opposed maintenance works on the Walter-Taylor Bridge. In my public statements and private statements, I have repeatedly said it is important that the maintenance works are able to be undertaken. It is the impact of them that I am seeking to address.
Thank you, Councillor.
A nuance he doesn't seem to understand.
Councillor Collier?
Thanks very much, Chair. I'll just talk on clause A and clause D before us. We support both these items on the Establishment and Coordination Committee agenda today before us. It's reasonable that council are seeking to invest in a permanent bathroom facility or restroom facility in the Brunswick Street Mall. However, what baffles us on this side of the chamber is why it's taken two years to find an appropriate space. You only need to look at the temporary bathroom facilities to recognise that that structure was not intended to be there for two years. It was clearly a quick fix that stayed around for too long. Those using the mall deserve better facilities, particularly when you look at the expense involved. The demountable structure was costing ratepayers $300 a day to maintain. That's $270,000 flushed literally down the toilet over two years. So yes, it is time for a new permanent restroom facility, and we know that the cost of the new site will be significant for ratepayers over the 10-year lease in rent alone. And our request is that we ask the council of forthcoming with the costings of the fit-out and ongoing maintenance. Ultimately, though, we do agree it is necessary to offer higher-quality amenities to residents, businesses and the local community in this important hub for Brisbane. On clause D, the amendments to the Urban Utilities policies before us appear to be quite straightforward. They detail the ownership and decision-making process of Brisbane's water supply. The statement of strategic intent outlines the investment in infrastructure and policy required to ensure safe supply of drinking water and safe treatment of wastewater out to 2029. I think that this is probably something that is taken a little for granted by people as they go about by their daily business. It is a privilege to have the ability to turn on a tap and drink water safely and to flush a toilet and know that it goes somewhere and it gets treated. But these things don't just happen on their own, and water security and climate change will have a big effect on the delivery of these services. I note that the report talks about public health extensively and says in the last year that there was a 26% reduction in uncontrolled wastewater overflows compared to 22/23. This is good news overall, but it hasn't been good news when it comes to issues on the north side with the Sandgate wastewater treatment plant facility, I'm told. Through no direct fault of their own, Urban Utilities have had several uncontrolled releases into Cabbage Tree Creek in the last few years, usually due to sizeable rain events and most recently due to a power outage. Councillor Cassidy was told that while there are some backup generators on site, there isn't one big enough to power the whole site, which was needed after the power had been cut in the incident last month, and this resulted in significant flows of untreated sewage discarded, discharged into the creek. I note that the report says $125 million will be paid as a dividend to councils this year, $120 million next year and then increasing amounts in the year ahead, money paid to council as part of profits generated by people who pay their water bills. The money that Urban Utilities generate has to pay for the ongoing supply of water, ongoing treatment of sewage and investment in upgraded infrastructure, and it also has to pay a dividend that comes through shareholder councils. On this side of the chamber, we really want to be sure that people know that their waste, their water and their sewage supply is put ahead of dividend payments. People who use Cabbage Tree Creek for fishing and recreation probably didn't feel like that last month. I know that councillor Cassidy has continued to ask Urban Utilities questions about their infrastructure and what lessons are being learned.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnson?
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on items A and items D. It is unbelievable that this administration still has not organised a permanent public toilet facility for people using the valley. We know it is a very busy night-time precinct, and it's also busy during the day. Instead of investing the funds that the shop owners and property owners pay into facilities that will support the type of activity that happens in this precinct, this administration has let them down. I mean, I've been here 16 years, and I've heard councillor Adams and councillor Howard stand up time and time again and say how great the Valley Mall is and how wonderful the facilities are, and they've put in pods and they've put in shops and they've done all these things, they just haven't put in toilets. So we already have a problem where young people don't have anywhere to go to the toilet, which is leading to some antisocial behaviour. And unfortunately, this council, instead of investing funds into what some people would consider an essential service, a public toilet, there is another, and this is a temporary solution still. And councillor Adams is shaking her head, sorry, and I don't think she understands what a lease is. A lease goes for a certain period of time and then it ends. That's the problem that she's had and why we didn't have a toilet before. A permanent solution would be where council builds something on its land, and it is there in perpetuity, like the toilets, for example, at Graceville Memorial Park that are 70 years old and haven't been touched by council since then. So I think, and councillor Adams is very cranky about all of this now, but a lease is a temporary instrument, and the lease is over a commercial premises in the valley, and it is a short-term solution. So if this council can fund structures in the mall, shops in the mall, allow those kind of things, then this council should be doing more to have public facilities available for people using the Fortitude Valley area. They are critically needed. So this is the only solution being put forward today. Obviously, you know, I'm not consulted on this. I don't know whether any of the shopkeepers have been or the steering committee of the Valley Mall. I am worried that in a few years' time, we will have a problem again because there is no long-term solution for public toilets, and it is incumbent upon council to make sure there is a long-term solution. But a short-term lease at commercial rates does not seem like a good idea. With respect to item 10, the Urban Utilities policies, I too note that it does seem reasonably straightforward, but increasingly we are seeing the need for investment in sewage services. There have been some in my ward, obviously, where we have sewage flooding into residential streets, and that happens unfortunately on a regular basis. No, it's not good. It's really not good. And in Yarrangpili, it's awful to watch water get into what should be a closed network and then have, you know, terrible things in your street, which requires clean-up. Now, that happens in other parts of the city as well, but it is essential that UU invests in the necessary infrastructure to upgrade these facilities, and as I said, they've done some work in Yarrangpili. But the big problem we've got is that UU is 85%, for all the new councillors, UU is 85% owned by Brisbane City Council. It is our creature. It has some representation from the other regional councils that are involved with UU, but this council is the driving force behind UU, and it unfortunately has taken a hands-off approach. They appoint their mates onto the board there, and I think that we need to be taking a more strategic look at what to do when it comes to our sewage and water infrastructure. We're definitely seeing an under-investment, and we can certainly use more.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Strong?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on item D in regards to the Urban Utilities policy. So I had a look over the documentation, and I didn't find what I was hoping to find, and that was a policy, being that we are an 85% shareholder and do have representation on the board, that there would be some acknowledgement of new sewage lines, and I'm talking to a treatment plant. Now, out my way in Ellen Grove, which is one of the very few greenfield sites still within about 18 kilometres of Brisbane, has been suffering over the last probably 20 years, well, maybe 15 years, because the, most of the sites, or the sites that are actually, could be developed in this greenfield area, aren't able to go ahead because of this, of the sewage, the lack of sewage trunk infrastructure. And I've had a number of developers, not a huge amount, but I've had a few developers who bring this to my attention, that QUU, through Brisbane City Council, being the 85% shareholder, have not kept up with the infrastructure needed to develop this greenfield area. And this greenfield area honestly would see hundreds and hundreds of houses, right, that could be developed away from those biodiversity overlays. That also impacts this area as well, and we must respect that, of course. So what's happening currently is that the infrastructure, or the developments that are actually happening, are actually, the houses being built in this area are actually are having to have individual pumps in the houses. Now, I didn't know that was a thing, right, until a few years ago, but individual pumps in the houses to pump up the sewage up to the trunk infrastructure into the Forest Lake Development, uphill, right? And every one of those homeowners, and I've said this before in previous debates, every one of those homeowners is responsible for that pump once they take possession of that house. And I tell you what, it's a thing. It has happened in other jurisdictions, but not very often. So this is a problem, I think, ongoing for those homeowners, right? But more importantly, the development, we talk about more housing being needed across our city. Well, here is something that Brisbane City Council, with those representations on the board, right, through QUU, could run a line from the Ellen Grove area through to Wakal Sewerage Treatment Plant. And that's what's needing, that's the missing link. And I know the previous councillor, Milton Dick, had the same issue that arose in his time in this chamber as well. So I just want to re-emphasise to the infrastructure chairman here and planning chairman and the Lord Mayor, that, listen, if you want to see a lot more development in my ward, and I do, especially housing, right, there is an opportunity that is being missed because of a lack of a connection between Ellen Grove and Wakal. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there further debate? Councillor Cunningham?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item D. On behalf of our residents, Brisbane City Council is the 85% shareholder in Urban Utilities, as has been identified in this place, but other local government shareholders include Ipswich, Scenic Rim, Lockyer Valley and Somerset. They're responsible, this is UU, is responsible for delivering water and wastewater services to 1.6 million customers in these local government areas, supplying more than 137,000 megalitres of drinking water and removing and treating around 126,000 megalitres of wastewater every year. This submission, Madam Chair, seeks council support... for a new statement of strategic intent to guide UU over the next five years until 2029. Across those five years, Urban Utilities forecasts over $2.5 billion in capital investment in our network. A network which is expected to grow to over 728,000 service dwellings in 2029, which is 50,000 more than today. Despite this growth, much of the spend will be on the renewal and rehabilitation of existing assets. Urban Utilities lists three strategic priorities in their statement, known as the critical few. The first is safe and efficient water services every day. This is obviously a key focus with key outcomes and KPIs in the areas of safety, public health and value. The second priority is to build trust, focusing on customer engagement and experience, ensuring urban utilities remains the trusted custodian of water assets. The third is shape and grow our future. This includes planning for the future in terms of innovative solutions, future-proof services and ESG outcomes. Also included in the submission is confirmation of the participation returns policy and participation agreement, which were reviewed and updated in line with the outcomes referenced in the new statement of strategic intent. Now, I'm happy to explain the participation return policy and the financial outcome set out in that strategic statement. Floor returns, Madam Chair, are agreed for the first two years, providing stable returns and mitigating risk to dividends during volatile economic periods. Returns are based on the real rate of return on equity, including indexation of UU's regulatory asset base and weighted average cost of capital. But I'd like to further unpack the discussion about participation returns. Like all utilities, whether that be electricity generators, bulk water providers or water retailers, urban utilities generates dividends for its shareholders which represent a return on the capital which was originally provided by the community. The corporatisation of utilities was a result of 1990s economic reform and it's designed to replicate competitive market outcomes, including providing returns to shareholders, just like other businesses. This is not a choice of this administration, Madam Chair. This is an economic reform which dates back to the 1990s. National competition policy and water pricing principles govern how UU operates in terms of the cost effective pricing and efficient capital structures. State owned utilities pay dividends to the state. Unity Water pays dividends to the Moreton Bay Council, Sunshine Coast and Noosa councils. And it's the same with our relationship with urban utilities. Finally, I'd like to really commend the work of our officers in preparing this document and I commend it to the chamber.
Is there any further debate? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item A and I'm a little confused about the contributions we've heard from councillor Collier and councillor Johnson because it seems to me that they may have been listening to councillor Howard and I telling everybody what a wonderful night time economy we have down there in the valley and how we are really trying to work the daytime economy as well. But they obviously haven't been down there any time recently. Because surprisingly, ground floor vacant spaces for public toilets are not just hanging around in the Brunswick Street Mall or the Chinatown Mall waiting for council to build toilets in. Now, again, I'm sure it is very lovely that there is toilets that have been built in Graceful Memorial Park.
One moment, please, Deputy Mayor. Sorry. Councillors, I've asked you already. Please remain quiet while other councillors on their feet, having their turn. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm sure it was lovely that the councillor for Tennyson could build toilets in Graceful Memorial Park when they were needed. We have toilets in Mott Park where they are needed and in Glenderman Park. But I'm not thinking off the top of my heart the park in the middle of the Brunswick Street Mall, Lord Mayor, that they would even support if we decided to build toilets in the Brunswick Street Mall. And my guess is, they argue that they'd rather see them built. But when we brought them in here to say they were built, the argument would be we should be leasing somewhere and helping the local economy. Their arguments were absolutely nonsensical. And the crazy giggle over there just actually supports that. The understanding of this is absolutely nil. We have been trying very hard for two years to find a permanent space for these amenities to be built for our burgeoning night time and daytime economy in this area. The temporary bathrooms went in two years ago when we were very close to a permanent solution in another ground floor area. But again, surprise, surprise, it is not actually greatly seen as a benefit to have the council toilets in your building. There is a lot of issues and management and security and unfortunately vandalism and damage that happens. And that's been the main cost for our temporary toilets, which is why we've been eagerly trying to find a space. And we're extremely grateful to the lesssee that has now come forward, the lease or, I should say, who has come forward and enabled us to build custom made, designed, community, thoroughly through community protection, through environmental design, custom made toilets for a night time economy in the valley at this site for 15 years. Now councillor Johnson says, well, it's not permanent. Have we seen anybody else recently with a 10 to 15 year lease that is not there forever? No. We are putting the money in to build them. We are putting the money in to maintain them. And the maintenance, we don't have a cost through you, Madam Chair, to councillor Collier. We don't have an annual maintenance cost. But that'll be a question you can have in budget next year because they haven't been built yet. We don't know what the requirements are. Our anticipation is a lot less than what we play at the moment because the demountables are definitely not fit for purpose. We recognise that. And they are damaged and they are vandalised and they have cost a lot to keep clean. So we're hoping that, and we're expecting that the cost for the annual operations of the toilets will be a lot less. But that cost will not be known until they're built and they're under operations and we see just exactly how much cleansing is required. But it's been very carefully designed, so it is safe. And there is the perception of safety, as much as it is safe, for males and females to go into these toilets at night time as well. Again, as I said, the building owner has agreed to a fantastic rental incentive for us that you can see there under commercial in confidence within the papers before you for the councillors today. It is a 10 plus 5 lease. We are expecting that our option will be taken off. We will look after them. They will be fantastic for the local community. They'll be fantastic for the local businesses and they'll be fantastic for all those tourists and visitors that we're expecting, particularly as we expand that night time economy across the valley region. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there further debate? Lord Mayor. Okay, so we'll now put A and D to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to item B. Oh, and C, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, before I go on to B and C, just wanted to table a document in accordance with the requirements of the City of Brisbane Act. And this is the annual financial statements for the year ending 30th of June 2024 for the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation. So I'll just table that document. Okay, item B is new leases to the Brothers Rugby Club at Crosby Road or Crosby Park Albion. The Brothers Rugby Club has been a tenant of Crosby Park for more than 70 years and has become integrated with the Northside neighbourhood and the wider Brisbane rugby community and certainly integrated with the local community around them as well. The current lease at Crosby Park commenced on the 30th of June 2016 and will expire on the 29th of June 2026. The lease includes a licence to use part of Crosby Park for training and warm up activities before games. Brothers Rugby has experienced significant growth in recent years, both in its sporting programmes and importantly in female participation, with women now accounting for 40% of their playing membership. This growth is reflective of the club's success and the community value it holds for the inner north residents and the wider rugby community. Despite the growth, the club's facilities are aging and need an upgrade. In response to this challenge, the club has redeveloped the Brothers Rugby Club master plan. The master plan details the club's intent to replace all aging structures and facilities with modern functional facilities to accommodate both male and female participation and all abilities access as well to support its diverse and growing membership. The master plan also involves a commercial component to provide a sustainable income for the club's capital and operational expenditure commitments. The master plan has received town planning and development approval and it proposes five stages of growth with stage one complete. Councillor is proposing that an agreement for lease be entered into, obligating the club to complete stages two, three and five. Currently, not all the stages of the master plan are fully funded and by entering into an agreement for lease, the proposed leases will only come into effect on the completion of each respective stage. So it provides some surety that what's being committed to will be done. Obviously, the completion of each stage then triggers the new lease. Once the stages listed in the master plan are completed, the Brothers Rugby Club will gain the full lease term to ensure they're able to reap the benefits of their investment and will be able to be provided with long term security for their continued operation of this valuable community club, as I said, which has already been in operation for more than 70 years at this location. Council is proud to support Brothers Rugby Club throughout this process and we look forward to seeing the club prosper and be upgraded as part of this proposal. Item C relates to Queens Wharf Brisbane Maintenance Deeds. And as we know, the first stage of Queens Wharf is expected to open by the end of August. And that's in time for River Fire and the start of the Brisbane Festival. Obviously, it's been a major project that has been underway for many years and it's involved the creation of a number of new assets that will become public or council assets as part of this integrated resort. And these maintenance deeds deal with how those assets will be maintained and putting the responsibility on the integrated resort to perform the maintenance of the assets that they have created. We'll also see when the resort opens, the reopening of William Street between Elizabeth Street and Alice Street. And this has been closed since 2017. And so a total of seven years of closure. We'll see that street section reopened. This agreement will support the smooth transition of maintenance responsibilities and clear ownership for the public assets and ongoing care at the precinct. Councillors work closely with Destination Brisbane Consortium to identify both standard and non-standard public assets within road related areas, ensuring all parties understand their respective roles and responsibilities. The three separate maintenance deeds are designed to guarantee that all assets are maintained to the highest standards and outlines the responsibilities for maintaining various public assets such as roads, footpaths, drainage infrastructure, lighting, bus stops and street furniture. The deeds include detailed provisions for routine and emergency maintenance, making sure the precinct remains not only safe and functional, but also an attractive and welcoming space for residents and visitors alike. Council will retain ownership and maintenance responsibilities for standard assets in the road and in the road related areas in particular and for existing council stormwater infrastructure. So just to clarify, where there have been assets created by Destination Brisbane and they are effectively for public use, they will maintain those assets. If it's standard road and stormwater infrastructure, we will maintain those assets. And so what this means effectively is that the public embellishments that have been created as part of the precinct, together with the publicly accessible open space around the resort, the maintenance responsibility and cost will be on Destination Brisbane Consortium, which is appropriate, I believe, given that they have a 99 year lease on that precinct. So it's important they contribute to the maintenance of that precinct over that 99 year period. This is a transformative project for Brisbane. It is a project that I'm proud to support. I know my team is proud to support. And it's certainly a project that will create many, many jobs and many, many tourism visitors to Brisbane as well. The entire business model for the Destination Brisbane Integrated Resort is not to have local people coming to have a gamble. It's actually bringing in people from all around the world to benefit from not just gambling activities, but a whole range of other activities that you can do in the integrated resort. 50 restaurants and bars. Brisbane's biggest ballroom that can, I'm told, will be geared up to be able to serve a main meal to over 1,500 people in 15 minutes. Quite an extraordinary feat. And, you know, a great tourist destination that will bring significant economic activity and benefit to our city. There will be thousands of local people employed in this resort, creating jobs in, you know, not only in the precinct for the short term, but for the long term. And so there have been construction jobs created, but there will be thousands of ongoing jobs created as well. But specifically about this particular document that's coming through, it relates to the maintenance of assets in the public space and makes it very clear what our expectations are of Destination Brisbane Consortium.
Further speakers? Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much. And I'll talk to clause B and C. So on clause B, for the new leases to Brothers Rugby Club, overall, we believe that this is a positive, giving a community club long term secure tenure to enable them to make investments in their own facilities. This will allow the club to use the security of this tenure and then engage in elements to lightly commercialise parts of the site, which give them an ongoing income stream. This, of course, can be a good thing. And this approach lessens their need to approach every level of government for large grants. It is similar to what has occurred a few years ago at West Rugby Club. And that club is also thriving without the need for pokies on site. This model has been promoted and it's likely that other clubs will seek to do the same, implementing complimentary facilities sympathetic to the local community's needs. It does highlight a greater problem and that is the fact that clubs all over Brisbane are going to need to get creative in how they support themselves because council has not offered enough guidance to them to become financially self sufficient, particularly without pokey machines and gambling revenue. Brothers have had this master plan in place for a number of years, I understand, and it's been delayed somewhat by the ongoing debate around nearby Olympic infrastructure. This was compounded by a plan that was lobbed to the media with zero consultation with the state that was to see the club relocate onto the lower portion of the precinct, water harvesting and the removal of half of the Allen Border Field facility. To top all that off, council expected the state to fund their thought bubble. I had heard that preliminary estimates were in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So I know that not only were the state blindsided, but so were the club. This confusion has caused delay in brothers implementing their plan and this council have their fingerprints all over it. We should be absolutely condemning the actions of the administration for their lack of vision for grassroots sporting club in just about every other location in the city. There isn't enough planning for growth. This council does not properly invest in fields, in drainage, in clubhouses and in change rooms for the whole city. They're all but ignoring the explosion of female participation in sport. This council is dropping the ball when it comes to the real legacy that we as a council can leverage for the upcoming Olympics in Brisbane. The teams that will want to come and prepare, acclimatise and train in the months prior to the games, ignoring the leap in participation that everyone is predicting prior to the games. There are clubs right across Brisbane who have all been, who have been all but ignored by this council for years, forcing them into making... for years, forcing them into making bad decisions and harsh decisions about closing their doors, inviting gambling machines and gaming machines into their club, or entering in alliances with larger clubs that don't have their best interests at heart. And all of this happens while politicians like councillor Adams and councillor Howard get sent to Paris on the ratepayers' dollars. On clause C, regarding the maintenance for Queens Wharf Brisbane, as the details in clause C point out, this new precinct is going to require a great deal of maintenance, planning and infrastructure by council. We accept that and we support that. So what we will do today, though, is take this opportunity to make a plea to the Lord Mayor and the administration through you, Chair, to ensure that this work stays in-house, supporting council's fantastic workforce. If we are going to be the organisation paid to manage these ongoing works, we should have the ability to carry them out in-house without having to engage subcontractors. And this is a concerning trend by this LNP council and something that we see happening far too often.
Is there further debate? Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and I rise to speak in support of item B. As the Lord Mayor outlined, item B is seeking council's approval to enter three new leases with options for further terms with Brothers Rugby League, sorry, with Brothers Rugby Club. Can't get the league bit, I'd be shot if I went over there and said that. This agreement for lease obligates the club to complete stages two, three and five of their master plan, with each lease coming into effect upon the completion of each respective stage. By taking this approach, council is able to ensure that we're entering into a fair and sensible agreement for lease and as the owner of Crosby Park whilst also providing long-term security to the tenant, a trusted and successful sporting club. Brothers Rugby Club has already demonstrated their commitment to the master plan through the completion of stage one. These early works included upgrades to the playing surface, drainage and lighting across the Jack Ross and Deshoban ovals with tiered seating and sun shelters also installed. Stage two works include the development of an aquatic centre and associated car park. These works prompted a proposed sublease to Brothers Rugby Limited and a sublease to Aquatic Achievers Operations, a commercial learn-to-swing provider. Stage three works include the development of a new community sport clubhouse, car park works, a canteen cafe, a club gymnasium and the base structure for a future function room. The stage three lease area includes sporting fields and stage four works. It will also include the area where stage five will be developed. Stage four continues the work of stage three and includes the further fit-out of the clubhouse and will be implemented when funding permits. It also includes the fit-out of additional change rooms, the function room establishment and fit-out and banked turf seating area. These stage four works are contained within the stage three lease area. The final stage, stage five, includes a new building for healthcare services, an indoor gymnasium, a club bar and outdoor seating. It is proposed that a sublease will be provided to Brothers Rugby Limited and a sublease to commercial businesses that complement the sport and recreation offerings on-site. This is a lengthy agreement for lease, Madam Chair. It's not abnormal by any means, however, it's not something we bring to this chamber on a weekly basis. It is a testament to the Brothers Rugby Club and how integrated they've become in their local community whilst also remaining future-focused and ensuring the longevity of their organisation. Its investment such as this into places like Crosby Park, which will help prepare our city for the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games and ensure that they create a positive legacy for families now and beyond the Games. The Shrida Council is committed to ensuring that Brisbane is the lifestyle capital of Australia. This work starts in our suburbs, in the places that we call home and at the community clubs that residents spend their weekends playing sport. And on that note, I'll commend it to the chamber.
Is there further debate? Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a couple of comments just in regards to the Queens Wharf Maintenance Deed. So it was, can I recognise the efforts of the asset management branch in forming this deed? I just wanted to go over some details just so that councillors appreciate what this means for council and what it doesn't mean for council. So for council, it means that council will retain ownership and maintenance responsibilities for standard assets. Now, so what's a standard asset? Things that you would ordinarily find within the city, elsewhere within the city. Street signs, items within the roadway, the road, the road surface, the road itself, the curb and channel. Much of the drainage work, the standardised improved drainage work, is the responsibility of the consortia. So I just wanted to make sure the councillors understood the distinction. So standard assets will remain the responsibility of council and our teams, but assets that go beyond our standard assets, whether they be improved lighting, whether they be improved public art or gardens, for example, the maintenance of those is the responsibility of the consortia. There are elements within the deed that speak to what happens in emergencies or in emergencies and the importance of functionality, however, because the consortia would like in some elements to be of a higher standard to what council would ordinarily provide, that responsibility falls on them. And the importance of this deed is that there's an agreement ahead of opening, an agreement ahead of these things being put in place, that ensures that the responsibilities are clearly set out, theirs and ours, in writing, and we're just asking today for the council to consider and approve that.
Councillor, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item B today, and it's very exciting to see that we finally have this lease signed. Thank you, Councillor Howard and the team for Brothers Rugby Union. It has been a long time coming. It has been a long time coming but not for the nonsensical argument we heard from councillor Collier around why it was a long time coming. And I just thought, as I was the planning chair that started when Brothers first approached on where they wanted to go with a master plan, and particularly as that master plan was going to require DAs, I thought I might just set the record straight. Brothers is well-known as one of Australia's most established and successful rugby clubs as the patron of East. That was a little bit difficult for me to say, but it is. And as a, I was going to say the biggest rugby tragic in the chamber, but I know councillor Toomey is giving me a run for my money. We are very, very proud of our rugby clubs and the work that they do in the community. As councillor Collier mentioned, I agree with her, I have to say wholeheartedly, West have done a wonderful job and Wests and Cheaps and Easts and many of them are following in the footsteps. So many, many sporting clubs should look to these examples of how to make themselves economically viable and sustainable into the future. I do note that the issue that councillor Collier mentioned did again represent that Green ALP coalition of chaos about no pokies, no pokies. I'm not sure councillor Strunk would be happy if the Richlands Lions pulled out all their pokies because I don't know how they'd go after that. Or maybe Zilmia FC, I'm not quite sure. I think they have a few pokies in there as well, but the leader's away today, so councillor Collier is having a play. But what we do know is that this is leading to financial sustainability for a club that has been around for over 100 years and are supplying the most amazing outcomes for not only male but female players, for under-sixes through to under-eighteens, for little bros from four and five-year-olds, to a touch programme, to modified rugby for neurodivergent children. All of those things, plus allied health and what they have planned is absolutely outstanding. This has not been held up by anything that council has done around the Olympics. Until the night before the Olympics candidature was put in, this is where the stadium was. It was the state government that changed it at the 99th hour that it was going to go to the Gabba. And then sat on their hands, sat on their hands about the indoor sports centre for three years. When we need a 12-court sports stadium, it went down to nine. It then went to 15 storeys on the racing club to pay for it and then it went out completely. Absolutely nothing to do with the very balanced master plan we put forward, but everything to do with the faffing around that we have had from the state government and the international embarrassment we are currently on the Olympics. But I am glad to see that Brothers has been able to get ahead, get their master plan sorted, get their lease organised, so now they can actually get out there and talk about financial security for the 25 years to come. And as for the case of what we are going to need around the city for the countries that are going to visit and get acclimatised, well, I'm glad to say being on the ground meant I learnt so much that I would never have learnt from a simple debrief in six months' time.
Any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on items B and C. Firstly, with respect to Queens Wharf and the extraordinarily complicated arrangements with respect to managing public space in the city. Look, Lord Mayor, you can quote me on this. I don't support another casino in Brisbane. Casinos have such detrimental impacts on our local communities and our most vulnerable people. I appreciate that this project has essentially been led by the state government. Council, however, did approve the DA through here many years ago now. But the big issue we've got now is that council is engaging with a commercial developer regarding the management of public land, public space. It should not be complicated as to who is responsible for maintaining public spaces. Public spaces should be managed by Brisbane City Council. They should be clear and delineated as to who is responsible for them. The gobbledygook attached to this report before us today is extraordinary. We will see from this massive problems with the management of public land around the casino. I only have to look as a comparison to a much smaller project at Tennyson where we have some council responsibility, some body corporate responsibility, some stadium Queensland responsibility, some developer responsibility. And do you know what happens? The spaces are not properly maintained because nobody recognises or agrees where those boundaries are. Now, we have to hope out of this process that the developer and the casino proprietors will actually invest in maintaining these spaces, but that shouldn't be the case. Our public spaces and public access to the streets of Brisbane should not be for sale to the highest bidder. And that is the culture that this administration is entrenching in Brisbane City Council. I am certain Brisbane City Council will just go, thank God, we don't have to do anything with this, we'll hand it over to the developer and they'll pay for maintenance. Well, let's take another example of how well that works so far for Brisbane when it comes to scooters. Brisbane City Council refused to address obstacles on the footpath caused by scooters in this city where they're a trip hazard, they're unsafe, people can't get through on bikes or wheelchairs. So this council, however, has commercialised that footpath by saying, no, go to Lime, Lime has to deal with that. That's what this council is continuing to do with public spaces. So in addition to the anti-democratic principles that this administration continues to push into this council, they are also commercialising the streets of Brisbane, and that is not a good outcome. We've seen them do it time and time again, whether it's scooters, whether it's the high amount of billboards selling our streets is what this LNP is synonymous with. With respect to item B, the new lease for Brothers Rugby Club, look, I appreciate that Brothers is trying to do the right thing for each community here and look at their long-term economic sustainability as a club. They're a really wonderful club. I don't know how many school dances I went to at Brothers when I was much younger, but it was a lot. And, look, they're a wonderful community-minded organisation. I feel they've been let down by Brisbane City Council because of the complication associated with the onerous provisions in this lease. I feel that a community club being put under this kind of pressure to perform in an exacting way is going to lead to problems. And I know that everyone's doing this with the best intentions, but I think council's letting the community down by making this so complicated and so complex, and I wish that there were simpler terms and conditions attached to this lease that will ensure the viability of this sporting club.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired.
Chair, I move that the council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Second.
It has been moved by councillor Gibney and seconded by councillor Adamin that the meeting adjourn for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber. Councillor Strung.
Just starting my stopwatch, we've only got five minutes now. Right, thank you, Madam Chair. Listen, I want to rise and speak in regards to item B, the Brothers Rugby lease. And I first want to make a little comment. Of course, I wasn't going to get up and talk about this, but there's a couple of things that have been happening, but then the deputy mayor made some aspersions in regards to the Lion at Richlands, which is separate from the...
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order, Deputy Mayor. Claim to be misrepresented. I know, your claim of misrepresentation...
Maybe the deputy mayor should have let me finish my comments before she jumped up. But as I say, making aspersions in regards to pokies at the Lion at Richlands and what I think about the pokies, I don't know. I haven't had a chance to speak on that any time in this chamber. Anyways, so I congratulate Brothers on their lease. I think it's, what, 25 plus an extension of 15? And I raise this because I know the Lions Soccer Club at Richlands, right, is in negotiations with...
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
...relevance to Brothers Rugby, no mention of Richlands Lions in this report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Strung.
Madam Chair, thank you. I think the deputy mayor raised the Richlands issue. Anyway, so if I may continue on...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
I congratulate the Brothers and their...
Point of order, Deputy Mayor. One moment, Councillor Strung. Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
I ask your ruling on the fact that I discussed Richland Lions, which I did not. I talked about pokies, which was discussed in relation to Brothers Rugby and other clubs, not about their lease.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you. Councillor Strung, if you can stick to the report, please.
Yes, and I'll refer to the Lion as the deputy mayor did in regards to pokies. Anyways, I congratulate Brothers on being able to get a long-term lease, which is very important, especially to their financial backers, right, usually banks, of course, because the banks do look for those long-term leases. And of course, Brothers have a fantastic track record, as does the Richlands Lions Soccer Club as well, who are in negotiations, I believe, with council in regards to some land not far from their stadium. And I just hope that new difference is given to the Richlands Lions Soccer Club in regards to a long-term lease, because I know they're, I don't know exactly what they're looking for, they haven't told me, I'm not part of the negotiations.
Councillor Strung, please stick to the...
And I just encourage...
Councillor Strung?
Yes?
Please stick to the report.
Yep.
We're not going into somebody else's lease.
I'm just speaking about contracts.
Thank you.
Speaking about leases.
It's not about contracts, it's about one contract. Can you please stick to the report?
Yep, and that contract or that lease, right, is a very important one for Brothers, as it would be for any club who are seeking to have a, do a major upgrade, of course, which Brothers is doing, of course, and over stages. And I just hope that, but anyways, it's about the Brothers Rugby Club, and I would have thought that the deputy mayor may have said something about the fantastic result that seven aside teams had over at the Olympics, being that she just was there, and to pay... and to pay a compliment to those two men's and women's seven aside teams who did a fantastic job, because honestly, we haven't had a rugby, rugby hasn't been part of the Olympics since 1924. So it's a long time. And so I just would hope that the deputy mayor would have said something about that. But I'll just finish my comments there. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, misrepresentation?
Thank you. I made a comment that the ALP had mentioned that it was great, there was no pokies, and all I said, that would be disastrous for Zilmia and Richlands.
Any further debate? No further debate. We'll now put items B and C to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Against, no. The ayes have it.
I've got way too many pieces of paper on here. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Economic Development and Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting, held on Tuesday the 6th of August 2024, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Adaman that the report of the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday 6th of August 2024 be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I go into the committee report last week, I just want to remind people that the Business Hub has moved premises. We are now down in the WeWork building that faces onto Post Office Square, just off Adelaide Street there, but they are still well and truly open for business, for workshops and events. Coming up on the 20th of August, we have enhanced your business productivity with AI, presented by Optus and Samsung. And it is live examples of Galaxy AI features about bridging communication gaps with live translate and chat assist, revolutionising your search experience and enhancing visuals and messaging. So great for many, many different areas for small businesses to get that experience from Optus and Samsung totally free for two hours in the Business Hub on the 20th of August. And it is also, as I said, moved premises with still a lot more space now for hot desking, turning up, a concierge service. If you still need that mentoring or support, please encourage your businesses and even your small, maybe one-person businesses to go down there and get the support they need. Last week, we had the report on the economic update for the city, which I can say is thriving. We have had a fantastic winter with Dine B and E, the winter holidays, and of course, this week, it seems like the weather is not actually dampening the air cast. So it's great to see that our economic stats are still going up in the right direction, because of course, where else would you want to be but Brisbane?
Is there any debate? No further debate. We will now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 6th of August 2024 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Parry that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 6th of August 2024 be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Collier.
Chair, can I move that clause B be taken, seriatum for voting purposes only?
Just for voting. Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, in our first Transport Committee for this session, we had a presentation from City Projects Office on council's road resurfacing bikeways programme. I'm trying to change the way that people move, Madam Chair, and we know that this requires a long and significant pipeline of investment to retrofit our existing road network. In Brisbane, we have a network of over 5,000 kilometres of footpath and bikeways, and we're always looking to expand those. Thus, the idea of road resurfacing bikeways was born. Last year, we began trialling this new method of designing and building separated bike lanes in the suburbs. Junction Road in Morningside was chosen as the first pilot site. In conjunction with road resurfacing works on the street, council also installed separated bike lanes with physical barriers. This new approach means that when eligible roads are resurfaced across the city, we can deliver active transport improvements efficiently. And it means that we won't be coming back to retrofit a bikeway design on a road that's been resurfaced in the last few years. So it's a more efficient approach for council to do it this way. Roads that are eligible must be on the current year's road resurfacing schedule and have enough width to allow for a bikeway on the road reserve. Generally, these are district roads, which are ideal for moving bicycles through suburbs easily, and generally, they're on the primary or secondary active transport network plan as well. We heard the community's feedback about the need to enhance road space and upgrade existing bike lanes along Junction Road. This is perfectly positioned between two primary cycle routes, that is Litton Road and Winham Road. Work commenced in April this year alongside road resurfacing schedule, and works were recently completed. Following the successful trial at Junction Road, Rainbow Street and Sandgate has been selected as the next location. Approximately 400 metres of existing bicycle lane along Rainbow Street will be upgraded as part of that project. So we'll paint new line markings, we'll install low-profile separators between the traffic lane and the bike lane to enhance safety and amenity. Construction of this project commenced in June this year, with completion expected in the next few weeks. We will continue to look forward for relevant opportunities to install separated bikeways in the road resurfacing programme. Madam Chair, I look forward to updating the chamber on our next opportunity in the suburbs. We also had a good and broad-ranging discussion at the committee about the success of Junction Road as the first site. It's acknowledged that there were some design changes from the original design that we consulted on with the community and the final design. This, of course, is a work in progress, this programme. Nothing is perfect. We want to be able to deliver lower-cost improvements through the road resurfacing programme. And it means that if we make every bikeway road resurfacing project a big CPO project with lots of design and lots of lead time and lots of consultation, you know, then we wouldn't be able to deliver the type of impact that we can deliver and the efficiency that we can deliver. And so we did make design changes with this project to lower the cost and to keep it within budget. And, you know, there was some controversy in the community about those designs, but I do know that the local residents, you know, most of those are quite happy with the upgrade as it is at the moment. Sure, some might have wanted a better and more expensive solution, but in the end, this programme, this project was born out of the need to deliver some improvement sooner rather than gold-standard projects. So we will, of course, and the committee did discuss that, and the officers who were present took that feedback on board, and we will, of course, incorporate that into future projects and programmes under this project. The committee also considered a petition for increased services on the 131 bus for residents in Formby Street in Alchester. As councillors are aware, we are in the last stages of finalising Brisbane's new bus network before it's implemented with full metro services. As part of the new network, residents in Formby Street will benefit from increased frequency on Route 131 during the AM peak. They'll also have access to the new Route 135 service, which will stop nearby on Benham Street. Leave further debate to the chamber. Thanks, Ben and Chair.
Further debate? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item B of the petition, about the bus petition increasing route services on 131. I do support the introduction of the new daytime services for the 135 on behalf of all residents who live out that way. However, sadly, I won't be supporting the overall recommendation, as residents have requested for more bus services along the 131 route throughout the daytime, which sadly won't be accommodated for this time. And I support the request of what the residents were asking on their petition this time. It is great news that overall, there is a daytime service for residents who live. So if we look at a map of Callumbell District Park on the right-hand side of that one, so I do thank the council officers, and I do understand, from having several conversations with them as well over the phone, that in this climate, it's been pretty difficult to achieve a daytime service generally. So that's really good news, except starting with Polara in my area and now Callumbell. I believe the lack of access to daytime bus services is a regular topic of concern for residents who live in our outer ward, in the outer suburbs, like Charles, like Steve as well. The problem is, I can't support this motion, as I believe, not only that, but basically proportionally, as we get further out towards the outer suburbs, basic asks of everyday people in our area who just want to catch a bus to the city during the day. Most of the time, they're for issues for things like hospital appointments, especially for people who have specifically requested for this bus route here. It's a pretty basic ask, and I think it's something that council should strongly consider again. I think this will be a future ongoing issue as well. The problem is, is that I personally wasn't here for the previous bus review, which is also part of the decision as to why I won't be supporting this motion here today. And also, the reality is, is that for those who still live further away from the 131 route, and also the new 135 service as well, will still be required to walk basically the same distance that they've been complaining about, that they have to walk to the current 130 line. So basically, unfortunately, there'll still be a large proportion of residents who live down the 131 line who'll still be having to walk the same distance despite the new changes. Chair, I would really love to support any further consultation, given I wasn't here previously. I'm hoping to see that there is an increase with patronage on these services because of the state government's great job on 50 cent fares. There's planning that can be done for residents who won't benefit as much from these changes as well, and for those who haven't had their questions and answers concerned addressed within the current response being drafted up by city council to the head petitioner. And while the response sent from the Brisbane City Council, LNP administration, will be to head petitioner Ravi, I wanted to make it clear that I asked city council if there could be more consultation that could be done, and also any extra information I can provide with them, as I agree with the head petitioner that there will be a need for more services over time, and particularly for those who live on the left side of Callumbell District Park, if you look at a map visually, and even after this response is sent. So as a result of this, I've been coordinating pretty closely with our local state member and Minister Leanne Enoch as well, so that ultimately, we can achieve the best outcome for all residents and get the most value out of our council rates, something that residents kept on reiterating to me as I was outdoor knocking them who live around this area, especially during a cost of living crisis. I also wanted to reiterate the concern of residents, which is that the nearest stop for Route 130 is actually approximately 800 metres from the Alchester Road at Formby Street bus stops, used by Route 131, and it's challenging for passengers with children. While technically, it's considered an acceptable distance to government standards, ultimately, I support the residents and believe we can do far better, and I already know there is far better work being done the closer you get to the city. The streets that I've also been talking about as well, which are close to these bus stops and residents who have been asking for more services, are actually the same streets where last week, the LNP council decided to pull off the motion from the table and effectively say they won't do anything to improve them as well. So sadly, I feel like residents who live out this way are getting less and less from the current council. Personally, I believe that your postcode shouldn't dictate whether you get access to basic services. I wish this process of voting, in all honesty, didn't have to be black and white, especially in times like this, given that the daytime service for 135 is still a win for residents who live in this area of Callumbell. So I do commend this, and I also congratulate Ravi and the 50, more than 50 petitioners who canvass really hard to bring more local services to this side of our area. I think we've gotten something, but I still think there's a lot more work to do, and I'll be there every step of the way. And I'll make sure that I'll be conveying this to Ravi as well throughout the whole process and however long this will take. Within the review, council didn't propose to increase bus services to the level requested for residents of Alchester Road at Formby Street, which is basically what the head petitioner was asking for. And for as long as that's the case, I'll be working alongside residents to make sure that they get a say in this chamber, and surely, this won't be the end of the discussion for that one. Thank you, Chair.
Further debate? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I'll rise to speak on the presentation with resurfacing and the separate lanes, bike lanes created on both Junction and Rainbow. I mean firstly, I think it would be, I really want to thank councillor Murphy for acknowledging that the shift was actually because of lowering costs. Previously, when conversation had come up about, and debate had come up about Junction Road, and in correspondence delivered to people interested about why Junction Road had shifted, the correspondent stated that the shift from curbside bike lanes to separated bike lanes as they are, and I'll explain this a little bit later, was because of safety. And it's good to hear that council and the LNP administration has come up here and said it wasn't that, it was actually lowering costs. And, you know, road resurfacing and bus lane enhancements are really important. We know that Rainbow Street and Junction Roads are both secondary bicycle ways. We also know that Junction Road, sorry, Rainbow, is also a local bicycle route. And the thing about the design, of course, on Junction was the idea of the curbside bikeway. So what that means is basically you have pedestrian, footpath, a verge, then you have the bicycle way, then you have the car parking, and then the road. So really, what it's showing is complete protection for cyclists. And this is assumed as best practice. Now we know that we will reduce costs as a priority, which is a shame, because of course, the priority of this council should be keeping people safe. And the safety of people not only riding their bikes across the city, but specifically in these areas, and the safety of people riding scooters also, because we know that that is increasing, people using personal or hired scooters to travel longer distances. We'll start using these, what we need to do, which is of course, protected, not separated, but protected bikeways, is really important. And it also, of course, keeps pedestrians safe, because we get them off the pedestrian route. I think it's important to just state these things. You know, these cycleways, as councillor Murphy through you, Chair, stated, they're done, they've been a part of road resurfacing, they won't be, council won't be coming back to them. But it's important to state the priority of council when it is looking at these secondary bike routes, at these primary bike routes, should it be about lowering costs? It should be, of course, protecting and helping enhance the feeling of safety for scooter and bike users across the city. We know that a lot of the routes that have missing links now are going to be challenging, they're going to be a little bit more difficult, they might become a little bit more expensive. I think it's also really important to note that when we are talking about costs, the recommendation, I believe from memory from the UN, was that 20% of all transportation costs, well budgets, of governments is actually contributed to active travel, and that includes, you know, not just green bridges like Kangaroo Point, but also, of course, cycleways, scooter ways and footpaths. And we're a long way from that, maybe, we'll see. I mean, the green bridge is costing a lot of money, but looking into future years, it's really important that we invest that 20%, because we want to make sure that this city is active. And not only active, we want to make sure that that transition is happening now. And of course, beyond active and that transitioning happening, number one is we want to make sure people are safe. So while it's good that councillors have moved forward to do bike lane enhancements as a part of road resurfacing, I've got to continue advocating for more safety to make sure they're not just separated bike lanes, but they are protected bike lanes. Thank you, Chair.
Further debate? Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. I just want to speak briefly on clause A. So from the outset, I want to state that the outcome of the bike lanes and road resurfacing project on Junction Road in Morningside is a much improved outcome from what was there previously, and that's a good thing. I'm genuinely grateful to see that this council has made some investment in that important corridor, but there is much more work to be done. I want to acknowledge the fact that this Junction Road was actually, from my understanding, listed for resurfacing, I think, in 2020. And it was only after a petition from local bicycle user groups for cycling infrastructure to be considered, did that project, you know, get pulled offline, reconsidered, and then, you know, has been delivered, albeit in a kind of roundabout way, I guess. Councillor Murphy was very happy to post, you know, in the midst of an election, an artist impression that promised the community that they were getting properly protected cycling lanes. And a decision was made at some point to reneg on that promise. I can appreciate that these are complex projects that require, you know, technical engineering, community consultation, but what I take issue... community consultation, but what I take issue with is that the community was promised one option and they were expected to decipher a works notice, a sneaky works notice that actually completely changed the project just to separated cycling lanes. So I've given that feedback through you, Chair, to councillor Murphy and I, my genuine wish is that when us as a councillor considering moving forward how we can deliver this programme, I think it's a good thing. You know, I think it's good that if we're taking a holistic approach to planning road resurfacing and looking for opportunities to program in additional active transport infrastructure, that's a good thing, but bring communities along the way with you.
Is there further debate? councillor Murphy.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just want to thank all councillors for their contribution to the debate on this item. I thought this was, this was exactly how the debates in this chamber should go, based on the policy, some good comments and criticisms made, all done very respectfully and, you know, there should be more of it. So of course, as I said at the start, Madam Chair, we, it was not a perfect rollout of the, of this project in Junction Road. We are still tweaking it. If we go too hard on making it a big sort of CPO project, high impact, high cost, you know, we will not achieve the objectives that we set out to achieve, which was lower costs, smaller improvements, incremental improvements that can be done in line with the road resurfacing programme. So, but yeah, I just, I'm honestly surprised, but hopefully this is the first time, but not the last tremendous debate from all councillors on this item. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. We will now put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Against, no.
No.
The ayes have it. We'll now put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Strunk. Ayes to my right and noes to my left.
Shall we ring the bell?
Ring the bells, thank you. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and seven against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Look, I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 6th of August 2024 be adopted.
And it's my pleasure to second that, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you.
It's been moved by councillor Wise and seconded by councillor Toomey, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 6th of August 2024 be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. The committee heard a report last week. I have, I always like to bring through reports where when you read them written down, they sound like they might be strange or uninteresting, but when they happen, you learn something from them. And this week, we heard misunderstood road rules. And can I ask all councillors, if there are any road rules I'd like clarification on, please ask for the presentation. What are you meant to, can you cross a single continuous centre line?
Yes.
What is the difference between, what can you do in bus stops? What's the nature of giveaway rules? What's the difference between no stopping and no parking, for example? All of these things are things that we would normally do in our day to day lives as councillors or normally have questions about from residents. Please take a moment. Mr Paul Verden, who was our presenter last week, provided a lot of that information. He can provide you more information on that. So please take a minute, read the report, ask for the PowerPoint that was at the presentation so that you can familiarise yourself because they are easy things to make mistakes with. Residents do ask you about them often, so please take advantage of this opportunity.
Is there any debate? councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Listen, I'd like to speak in regards to the presentation and maybe I should take something that councillor Murphy said in regards to that challenge he put out to us over here, that we're being respectful. It was, Paul Verden was, did an excellent presentation and I had a number of questions and which he was able to answer, but there was one that was, that was, one that was an issue in my ward, a long blunder road in regards to some very long articulated vehicles that were parking along in front of a residential area. And he's asked me to, to contact compliance and, and book a job, which we'll, which we'll do. But I think most of those road rules that were covered are, of course, are some we probably know, but some that we didn't really, probably haven't thought about in a number of years, if they were even part of the test that we did back when we got our licences, all those years ago, for some of us anyways. But yeah, I do appreciate these sort of presentations because they're, they're helpful and learning a little bit more about what, what those compliance issues are when it comes to road rules that as, as the Chair was saying, that a number of our constituents asked those questions and probably the one that I get asked the most in regards to is doing U-turns. So yeah, I appreciate the presentations and there should be more of them and thank you, Chair.
Any further debate? councillor Wines.
Can I just say, I just appreciate the contribution of councillor Strunk and just as the response to the question I noticed that was presented in this week's committee from the question last week, it was determined from the information provided by councillor Strunk that on balance, it was likely that there was a compliance matter and we have asked him to log that through to the Compliance and Regulatory Services Branch. I also recall councillor Strunk, and while I'm here, we'll talk about, this councillor Strunk asked a question about vehicles parked in their own driveway, but part of the vehicle was in the footpath. Yes, that is a rule. We have, we have a rule in this place where we try our best to make sure that the footpath is available for use at all times. So, and that's a disability access, whether you're in a wheelchair or a mother with a pram or a person who've got, who needs, who's got bad knees or ankles, we try not to push you out onto the road and come back again. So to do that, any vehicles who are protruding from the driveway into the footpath are in breach of our, our rules, but I appreciate why in some instances with some lot sizes that's hard, but we do bias towards the need to maintain that footpath thoroughfare. So as I say to all councillors, please take the time to have a look at these things, familiarise yourself because it's not always super obvious what the actual answer is. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wines. We'll now put the report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 6th of August 2024 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Wolf, that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 6th of August 2024 be adopted. councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I moved on to the committee report, I wanted to provide the chamber with an update from our Development Services team. For the month of July, 332 development applications were completed, including 36 applications approved for a material change of use for a residential purpose. This has resulted in approval of a net increase of approximately 308 dwellings. For the calendar year to date, in the seven month period, 2,157 development applications have been completed, including 272 applications approved for a material change of use for a residential purpose, resulting in an approval of a net increase of approximately 3,855 dwellings. So some useful stats there. Madam Chair, turning to the report, item A was a committee presentation on 855 to 859 Beams Road at Bridgeman Downs. This property was previously zoned rural. However, under the Bridgeman Downs Neighbourhood Plan released in September 2023, the site area is now zoned low density residential. The development application proposed to reconfigure two existing lots into 26 lots. Through the application, the developer will provide a significant contribution to structure planning in the area, including three new road connections to the north, east and west and upstream drainage connections to three of the surrounding allotments. An application has also been received by the developer to facilitate a new sewer pump station at 915 Beams Road to deliver the necessary sewerage infrastructure to service the area. This development application is a great example of not only providing detached housing, but also providing the area with necessary infrastructure such as new road connections, street scape improvements and sewer upgrades. And I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Is there any further debate? No further debate. We will now put the item to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Against, no. The ayes have it. councillor Davis, Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, 6th of August 2024 be adopted.
Seconded.
Point of order, Chair.
For councillor Collier.
Can I ask that items D and E together be taken seriadum? So A, B and C together as a block and then D and E together.
For voting and?
For voting purposes only.
For voting only, thank you. councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week's committee presentation was an introduction to City Parkland Services and it was really great to have the CEO, Shaun Madigan, providing the overview. City Parkland Services is a wholly owned subsidiary of Brisbane City Council and was established back in 2013, initially to manage South Bank Parklands and Roma Street Parklands on behalf of council through a management framework that was established by the Queensland Government. Since then, CPS has grown in capacity and is now responsible for the holistic management of several premier parkland precincts across Brisbane, including Victoria Park, Anzac Square and Post Office Square and now Newstead House. We heard how CPS are currently engaged with a number of entities via commercial contracts and funding agreements, including council, but also the Department of Housing, Local Government, Planning and Public Works, South Bank Corporation, the Board of Trustees of Newstead House, South Bank Corporation Board of Trustees, sorry, South Bank Corporation, Queensland Veterans Council, as well as Destination Brisbane Consortium at Queen's Wharf. CPS specialise in precinct management and deliver a range of services across the city. Their remit includes asset and contract management, parkland operations and maintenance, horticulture, electrical and water services, project management, corporate services, events, marketing, 24-hour incident response and CCTV installation and management and maintenance. As I said, Madam Chair, CPS produce and host some of Brisbane's biggest events throughout the year, events which attract thousands of visitors, both locally and from abroad. These include the New Year's Eve celebrations, which bring in over 80,000 people to South Bank Parklands, the Enchanted Garden, which saw that more than 110,000 people visit Roma Street Parklands over four weeks last year, and Brisbane's biggest Easter egg hunt weekend at Victoria Park. They also provide event planning and assistance for hosted events, including the upcoming Cold Chisel 50th Anniversary Tour and Ability Fest, which both will be held at Victoria Park. So it was a very comprehensive, a very, very comprehensive presentation by Shaun, talked about the things that we'll be doing in the future and a couple of case studies that he talked to us about. Everybody was, I think, quite engaged in the, in the presentation that Shaun provided us and I look forward to City Parkland Services doing more exciting things across our city in the coming years. I'd also, we also considered four petitions and I'll leave further debate on those to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further debate? councillor Massey.
Thanks, Chair. I will rise to speak briefly on A, items A, C and E. Firstly, I just want to talk about the great presentation that was given about City Parklands, very informative, very, very, very informative. City Parklands seems to be going through a time of expansion and change, so I'm looking forward to see how that proceeds. I did want to also just note very quickly, something that has recently come up, that a constituent has come to me towards, could be an issue in the future. Of course, City Parklands has trans, is still doing maintenance for South Bank, but South Bank Corporation has taken over events. Last year, there was an amazing, for the first year, the Pongo Festival, which happened at the South Bank Piazza. This year, unfortunately, they won't be able to continue it because South Bank Corporation has said that date is booked for another event that South Bank Corporation is doing. There are some concerns from community groups that have come to me that have said, is there going to be an increase in price? Are we going to have access? I thought I'd just plant that there, just as something to consider in the future when we are thinking, the Piazza at South Bank has great public transport, has really great accessibility to one of, you know, the key destinations in Brisbane. I'm very happy to have it in, in the Gabba Ward. And so I just wanted to place that there because there has been a bit of conversation completely external from this presentation that have come to me just very recently last week. Next, I'd like to talk about item C, which is the response to the petition for the skate park. Here, I would just want to acknowledge the, the work that the Gabba Ward office has done in collaborating with local skate park community, skateboarding Queensland and also the local skate shops. While the petition was calling for an upgrade, I'm pleased to inform that there is an upcoming SEF upgrade through the Gabba Ward and we've been able to deliver what will be an upgrade working with those communities. Skateboarding is a really important sport. And you know, as the demographics are shifting in the Gabba Ward, where we're having a much youthful demographic, it's important to provide opportunities for play and enjoyment and to build community, including a skateboarding community. So I do want to thank the work and the engagement that we've had from skateboarding Queensland, local skateboarders and also the local skate shop where Armets used to be, if anyone's familiar with Armets in West End. Sorry? I know, very, very missed. And so I just want to add a thank you there. Lastly, I will speak on petition E, which is about green space. So this petition was on 24 Duncan Street and signed by many residents in West End that are looking for a buyback. I think it's important to note that West End is incredibly underserviced in parkland. It has less parkland than a New York resident. It has much less parkland than what Brisbane City Council recommends that is needed for a resident. And I, I support these petitioners who have taken this in their hands, try to get some parkland back. I recognise the response, which was that the land was not for sale, even though the neighbouring land, 15 Duncan from Membury was. And while I have rejected the petition response and this petition, because I still want to continue to fight for green space in West End, we need it. I do want to recognise that I appreciate that in this petition, that the response included that council does have a plan to buy back land so that South Brisbane, West End, the Karoolpa area will get more green space. I recognise that and I appreciate that because it is important that council knows that that must be a priority for the Karoolpa region. I think I'll finish my comments there. Thank you so much, Chair. Thank you so much, Chair.
Thank you. Further debate? No further debate. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And can I thank Councillor Massey for her remarks? And it was a good presentation from CPS. And I think for the newer councillors to understand the role that CPS plays as a subsidiary of council was important and to give some insights into the many things that they do. And it's quite diverse, was quite enlightening for some. I also acknowledge Councillor Massey's understanding that we are still looking at areas in West End that may be appropriate for purchase for parkland. There are many challenges in West End that Councillor Massey is aware of, and we just will keep looking for appropriate locations that fall within the remit of what the city plan speaks to. Thank you very much.
We now put item A, B and C to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Against no, the ayes have it. We'll now put D and E to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by Councillor Collier and seconded, sorry, by Councillor Massey and seconded by Councillor Collier. Councillors, ayes to my right and ayes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour, three against and four abstentions.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Hutton, City Standards Committee.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the sixth of August, twenty twenty-four be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councillor Hutton and seconded by Councillor Adaman that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the sixth of August, twenty twenty-four be adopted. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. Our first presentation this session was from our Programme Planning and Integration Team on council's bushfire preparedness and planning. While we can't prevent natural disasters here in Brisbane, we certainly can be prepared. Preparation for the upcoming bushfire season is well underway. Our recent wet summer saw ideal conditions for grass and vegetation growth, and council is making sure our suburbs stay safe through our planned burn programme. By conducting these burns now, our officers are reducing the amount of fire fuel available, thereby mitigating potential bushfire risks and protecting homes and habitat. Council manages more than ten thousand hectares of bushland and natural areas across Brisbane. Council's investment in fire bushfire preparedness includes construction of fire trails, developing fire management plans, managing vegetation, and maintaining over seven hundred kilometres of fire access tracks. We also establish water points in remote areas and manually reduce fuel loads through various means. Council also has twenty four-wheel-drive light attack firefighting units and currently employs more than one hundred active trained firefighters for planned burns and to assist relevant agencies if a bushfire occurs. Collaboration is key, and council works closely with the fire department and neighbouring agencies like SEQ Water to respond effectively to bushfires. The committee was also updated on the various research projects council is supporting, such as the National Health and Medical Research Council and the University of Queensland's Ember Study. The study investigates short-term health effects of bushfire smoke on firefighters and the community. Chair, the Shriner Council is committed to preserving our precious bushland and making sure our fantastic outdoor lifestyle can continue for years to come. I leave further debate to the chamber.
Is there any, any further debate? No further debate. We'll now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community and the Arts Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My time hasn't gone back. It started at three minutes. We're right?
Okay, thank you. I move that the report of the Community and the Arts Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the sixth of August, twenty twenty-four be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councillor Howard and seconded by Councillor Atwood that the report of the Community and the Arts Committee dated Tuesday, sixth of August, twenty twenty-four be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just before moving to the report, I want to touch on a question raised by Councillor Griffiths in question time relating to the Old Juggler's Arts Building. So with the greatest respect to Councillor Griffiths, the future of this facility has been a topic that our officers and I have been keeping him up to date with after it was vacated by the Juggler's Arts Group. On the sixth of September and twelfth of October, Councillor Griffiths and Scouts Queensland were both present at onsite meetings. We all know that when this facility was vacated by Juggler's Art, it was handed back to council in very poor condition. We recognise, however, that the best outcome for the local community would be for this facility to be made available for community use as quickly as possible. Investigations into what would be required for this to take place has included an assessment of the building's current condition, which has so far revealed that the top floor of the building is in significantly worse condition than the bottom floor. The floor contains significant contamination on the building frame and would require the internal and external wall sheeting needing to be removed. Based on the defects and the associated risks, our officers have proposed the best option to activate the vacant facility and extend its lifespan is to remove the top story of the building and install a new roof over the lower level. The relevant officers for this project have been working very hard to keep Councillor Griffiths up to date on these works, along with updating Councillor Griffiths on the ongoing lease negotiations with Queensland Scouts who would like to activate this facility. On Friday, Councillor Griffiths was informed by a council officer that council is partnering with Scouts Queensland to activate this building, which will include the removal of the non-compliant upper level of the facility. I recognise that Councillor Griffiths may be unhappy with the decision due to somehow thinking that there's a conspiracy relating to nearby apartments, which of course is quite bizarre. This is despite, of course, that Councillor Griffiths has-
One moment, please, Councillor Howard. Councillor Griffiths, you will not call out across the chamber, and I give you your first caution. When people, Councillor Griffiths. That is your second caution. You will not speak while another councillor is on their feet. Do not call across the chamber. That's the third caution. Councillor Howard.
Madam Chair, this is despite, of course, that Councillor Griffiths has been involved throughout the entire process.
One moment, please, Councillor Howard. Councillor Griffiths would like to grandstand, so we'll just-
Correct.
Give him one moment, please. Councillor Griffith, I consider that you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct and in accordance with section twenty-one four of the meeting's local law, two thousand and one, I hereby request you to stop calling out across the chamber while another councillor is on their feet. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Scouts Queensland do not want the upper level, given that they are facilitating activities with children and don't want them accessing stairs. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Moving now to the committee presentation, which was, of course, about the fantastic Brisbane Festival, which will be happening right across Brisbane from the thirtieth of August to the twenty-ninth of September. We had a wonderful presentation about this diverse programme of performances from the arts, theatre, dance, music and comedy. And the annual Riverfire Event will open the festival with a fireworks display on barges, bridges and building rooftops along the Brisbane River. There is just so much to see and do with this year's wonderful festival, and I encourage all of our councillors to support some of the activities that will be happening in the different wards. We have made an undertaking that we will let all councillors know what is happening in these wards, and I recommend it to the chamber.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak in regards to the Brisbane Festival, and I congratulate the Brisbane City Council and, of course, the other foundation partner, and that's the Queensland Government. Thank you to the Miles Government for continuing to support this fantastic festival that goes back for a number of years now. I wasn't able to be in the chamber or in the committee room. I had to go through teams because I was a bit ill last, last week. So I just got my copy of the, of the Brisbane Festival here. Now, this isn't a complete, this doesn't, this isn't a complete programme. I'm waiting to, to receive that information so I know what's actually going to be happening in my ward. And I believe there is some work being done with at least one community group in my ward in regards to that. But looking through this, of course, I'm really jealous of Councillor Griffiths, of course, because he's got a whole page dedicated to the Maruka Block Party. Yeah, what do I do when I have to get a page? I've got a lovely staging, I've got a lake and a beautiful amphitheatre and a lake. So I do have some venues, so I'll just put it out there. But the other one, the other thing that really stood out, of course, is Trent Dalton's Love Stories. And I'm thinking, well, that's a bit of a departure from the last thing that, that I watched with Boy Swallows Universe, which was definitely not, well, I suppose it was a bit of a love story in the end. But anyways, listen, big name, I'm sure he'll be a big drawcard. But if you just have a look through it, it's just, it's got something for everyone, I think. And I do, I do appreciate the Queensland Government and the Brisbane City Council for continuing to invest in the Brisbane Festival. Thank you, Chair.
Further debate? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I'll stand to speak briefly on Brisbane Festival, which is an incredibly important event in Brisbane. I congratulate Brisbane City Council for supporting this event because it is an important event to support. I also, even though it is early, but I do want to congratulate both the artistic director, Lou, and also the CEO, Charlie, for the work that they've done on the Brisbane Festival. It's not always easy to put festivals on, especially in this time. I think the Brisbane Festival since Lou has been the artistic director has done some really fascinating and interesting things that have moved not only in the delivery of new work, but also in bringing arts to the suburbs, like the street time serenades, like the Maruka Both Party. And this shift of how arts can be on our streets is really important for us to recognise the importance of arts, not just in major institutional areas like a Goma, like a Q-PAC, at the powerhouse, but also how important art, music can play in our local residents and streets. And for that shift, I really want to acknowledge Brisbane Festival for highlighting that and also highlight the work that both Lou and Charlie do, not only in support of local artists, of course. I will always say we can do more of that. Brisbane Festival is doing a really incredible job of not only helping the promotion of new work, hiring local producers so they can upskill their skills, but also ensuring that local artists are paid, and that's from artists that are performing theatre shows, musical shows, et cetera, all the way to artists DJing the art boat, which I have done previously myself, and that was really fun. So I just wanted to rise briefly and talk to that. I'm looking forward to Brisbane Festival. I know that it is a wonderful time in our city. And I again commend all the supports that can be delivered to the Brisbane Festival, whether it's at a federal, state or local level, and ask that we continue the support and, where possible, well, you know what I'm going to say, more support for the arts. Thank you, Chair.
Further debate? No further debate. Councillor Howard.
Just very briefly, Madam Chair, I just want to thank those who contributed to the debate. And of course, the Serenade Programme was funded by our very own Lord Mayor Adrian Shriner in its very first year and was one of his ideas that we take things to the suburbs. And so I just want to thank everyone for their comments. And, and all of us are looking forward to a fantastic festival. Thank you.
We'll now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the sixth of August, twenty twenty-four be adopted.
It's been moved by Councillor Cunningham and seconded by Councillor Wong that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the sixth of August, twenty twenty-four be adopted. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee presentation last week was the Quarterly Net Borrowings Report, which included an economic update from council's corporate treasurer. The presenter noted the small uptick in global growth forecast, but noted the ongoing risks presented by escalating geopolitical tensions, which, from an economic point of view, impacts energy and commodity markets. Inflation also remains more persistent globally, but particularly so in Australia, with inflation increasing to three point eight percent in the June quarter. The latest RBA statement of monetary policy states that the lowering of the cash rate is expected to begin from around the turn of the year and to continue gradually through twenty twenty-five. And I'll leave further debate and comments to the chamber.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just very briefly with respect to council's financial position. I note certainly earlier today, the Lord Mayor tabled the CBIC report. Unfortunately, that's not going to contribute to a positive cash position in council. The CBIC has suffered a massive operational loss of seventeen million dollars, and the ever-shrinking returns are down from twenty million to eleven.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
The Lord Mayor did table that report, but it's not in the report for the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, and I draw the deputy mayor to paragraph two, paragraph one and paragraph two, but certainly the report provided a market and economic review, and I quote, "A summary of following issues in relation to council's investments." Now, the CBIC is a council investment, to my knowledge. Not a good one, but an investment.
Is there any further debate? No further debate. We'll now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it. Petitions. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Givney.
I have a petition on behalf of Councillor Dixon.
Councillor Allen.
Madam Chair, I have a petition requesting council improve or widen the road at the bend that joins Hayden Street and Wayers Road Nudgee.
Councillor Howard.
Madam Chair, I have two petitions requesting council ensure the redevelopment of seventeen Skyring Terrace Centre Reef provides a compliant river walk and bikeway.
Councillor Givney, may I have a motion for the receipt of the petition? One moment, please. Oh, sorry, yes, good, for the petitions. Thank you.
Chair, I move the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second.
It has been moved by Councillor Givney and seconded by Councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? Is there any general business? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madame Chair. And I am very happy to stand and give the first part, because there will be many parts with a five-minute general business, on findings from Paris and the Olympics. It was an amazing experience and I can honestly say, and you can ask the other mayors and the other officers that were there, that we learnt so much on the ground that would never, ever have been possible to get from a brief in six months' time from Paris. That is not to say that Paris haven't done a fantastic job of hosting us and the city has truly shared their experiences as a host city, not necessarily the OCOG and what they needed to do. And it's been absolutely wonderful to share that on the ground and actually be able to talk to them about what those opportunities have been for them and how they managed to make sure that everything came together in quite a hectic fashion, I think, in the long run. They had eight years like we did, however, that eight years was severely shortened by the COVID years and the planning that they had and the amount of time they had to actually be personally together with the many levels of government and organisations to get it planned. So even with the best planning, I think Paris too was a little bit rushed in the last 12 months to make sure that they truly, truly got everything together. The wonderful thing that we did have around the on-the-ground work was that the Paris, the city of Paris, did their own observers programme for other cities to join. So besides just the OCOG presentations that were done by the IOC, which our council officers duly attended, as was their case because they got the observers panel, we also had the opportunity, myself, Mayor Natoli, Mayor Tate, Salt Lake City, who are the new Winter Olympic recipients for 2030, joined us in a lot of these as well, Milan, obviously, as well as the 2026 Winter Olympics, about what actually happened on the ground in Paris as well. So some of the topics that, or all of the topics that were actually held, that we were attended by somebody from either Brisbane City Council, myself or BEAT, included water and cleanliness, venue approaches, accessibility, city services, communication, tourism and economic development, dressing and signage, eco-friendly games, equipment and infrastructure, festivities in the city, international relations, legacy programmes, marketing, mobility and transports, Olympic lanes, opening ceremonies, the Paris Media Centre, Paris Operations Centre and security, safety, health, oh, still going, social ticketing, which was a very interesting programme that they ran, the torch relay and the volunteer programme. Now, that list that I just read out, and I'm a bit sad that councillor Cassidy isn't here today to hear that list, hopefully he'll read it in Hansart, I'm sure he will diligently, that list is a list of the things that the city of Paris needed to organise separate from OCOG. It is enormous, the level of work that the city is going to have to put in as the host city, separate from what OCOG does as actually running the event. We have said it often and I'll say it again, it is more than just four weeks of Olympic events, it is so much more. I have to say, the highlight for me for the learnings was the transport, something you could only learn if you're on the ground. Obviously, their transport system is spectacular, they've had it for 100 years or more. However, they did really need to tailor their buses, tailor their Olympic lanes around the city, but also their metro. Now, I've been to Paris a few times, I have to say, it was sparkling clean. Cleanliness above anything I've ever seen in Paris, maybe nearly as clean as Brisbane, but they have done an amazing job, but particularly in their transport area, to make sure that the signage, the dressing of the metros, everybody knew exactly where they needed to get off to Olympic venues, and when they did get off, it was clearly signed. Now, some people have said some of our venues are difficult because it's a kilometre from a railway station. Well, the Star de France was a kilometre from the railway station. Nobody blinked, but there was very, very clear signage, lots of signage, and something that we really will need to look at right across the city and particularly around our venues as well. The interconnections of those transports and of course the volunteers. And the volunteers is something that I will be talking a lot more about in future GBs because the volunteers, there's 45,000 of them for the IOC, but 5,500 of them were from the council that they organised. So what BEAT has done in the concierge programmes and the welcome you programmes that we've talked about, spoken about in committee, are going to be vitally important to make sure that our host city volunteers are very, very much up to scratch to make sure our visitors have the absolute best visit when they're here in 2032.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you.
Councillor, can you put your microphone on?
There you go. The little green light's coming. Yes, thank you, Chair. It's sad that we've only got five minutes now to talk in GB, really sad for our communities that we'd like to speak about. And I'll just kick off to say that the Indian Day Fair, of course, is happening this weekend at the Roma Street Parklands. And it's a big event for the Indian community, of course, a massive event really, and it cost them a lot of money to put this together. And of course, it's funded by GoPO and a number of GoPO fundraisers that they hold throughout the year. I'd just like to make comment that Eera Erpet Singh, who's the president of GoPO this year, and Usha Chandra, who's vice president, they worked tirelessly to fundraise for this event. You know, Roma Street Parklands, when you have to hire it, of course, isn't cheap, I'll tell you. And so, but it's a fantastic venue where we'll see a lot of vibrant dancing and singing, unbelievable food. I just hope the weather behaves itself. It's supposedly, it's supposed to be sunny on Saturday, so we'll just cross fingers there, because we have been at the event over the years and it has, sometimes the weather hasn't cooperated. But it's just an incredible event, it's, you know, who's who ends up going, of course. We've had premiers, we've had speakers of the House, of course, Milton Dickie's often there, along with the treasurer, maybe, who knows, well, maybe we'll get a prime minister, who knows? But they really pull a big crowd and it's just, I just can't say enough of this, the GoPO executive and the huge amount of work they do to pull this thing together. I congratulate them prior to the event because I know the event is going to be fantastic. Another event, that little local event, of course, that happens is in my ward, of course, is the Music of the Lake. They're starting their third year and the numbers keep growing, actually, slowly, but the numbers will keep growing and they're, and they're, and they're changing the genre as well, their music a little bit to remain fresh to the people that go on a semi-regular basis. It's held every fortnight and I just pay tribute to the band who's, again, completed two years and they're heading into their third year. The Forest Lake Markets happened last Friday. It was a bit cool, but it was a, it was a one that a lot of residents came out to support. And the food trucks, of course, are fantastic, there's about 10 or 12 food trucks there. So a lot of people even just stop in to pick up some takeaway and take it back home. But there was a good turnout at the markets and the WASP Rugby Club, which is the facilitator, have been doing a terrific job. It's been going now well over 12 months and I think it's here to stay for as long as they want to do it. And I think the community, the Forest Lake community and surrounding communities are continuing to support it as well. Fantastic stalls, even stuff that I like to buy. I mean, it tends to be sort of focused more for ladies and what ladies like to buy, not so much for the guys, but there is plenty of stuff there for the guys now, which I, especially our men shed, who was down there in, down there in Numbers with their stall and I bought a couple of paintings last week and I've told them this last month and I told them this month, sorry, I've run out of walls, I can't, I can't buy anymore, but they have other stuff as well. So with those, with those few comments, because again, we're under the pump here, only five minutes, I'll finish my comments there. Madame Chair.
First speaker is councillor Wong. It has been moved by councillor Wong and seconded by the deputy mayor that the motion from 21st of May 2024 be taken off the table. This is a procedural motion, so I now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is carried. The motion from 21st of May 2024 has been taken off the table. I will restate the motion for the chamber while it is being redistributed to councillors. Motion was originally moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier that this council calls on the Lord Mayor to fully fund the Ain Bumpen Lagoon rehabilitation plan developed by council in July 2020 in the 2024/25 council budget. Councillors who have already spoken are councillors Cassidy and Givney. Debate now resumes from where it left off on the 21st of May 2024. Councillor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that, I know that this is a project which councillor Cassidy and his law mayoral candidate, Peg Conrad, promised in the 2020 council election. This demonstration has undertaken work to ensure that the options to address the lagoon's algae issues have been investigated and options considered. As a result, we invested in regular works to test and maintain the condition of the lagoon as outlined in management plan, including arrangement of the water body to increase its oxygen content, as well as regular maintenance of the system, treatment with a chemical agent to fix and processulate available first, also treatment with a biotic agent to remove nitrate from the water bodies, as well as regular litter collection and removal and regular water quality monitoring. Councillor Cassidy frequently forgets to mention this significant work, as well as the fact that there are areas of vegetation embedded within the structure has been cut back, but roots remain, and there is an estimated 75% likely food that any disilting works will result in part of a full structural failure of the wall of the lagoon. The lagoon is practically a closed system and the inflows into the lagoon are largely from the local stone water network and stone water reservoirs being the main source of sediment deposition. So due to the nature of the system, it is highly unlikely that a renaturalisation work proposed by councillor Cassidy will prevent algal blooming. Further, disilting only part of the lagoon would not restore the occurrence of blue-green algae. So based on this advice from hydrological and water quality experts, council does not intend to proceed with disilting works at Ain Bumpen Lagoon. We will, of course, continue to monitor the health of the lagoon and undertake maintenance. It is also worth noting that in recent times, the frequency of the blue-green algal blooms has been lessened in the past, which is encouraging. A survey by City Standards in mid-February 2023 shows 95% open water with very little aquatic vegetation. There were no measurements of the lagoon's sedimentation levels, however, the lagoon water was observed to be very clear. For these reasons, we will not support, we will not be supporting this motion to life. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. And I think that it's pretty despicable, but not entirely surprising that the LNP have chosen today when the elected local representative who represents the community in which the Ain Bumpen Lagoon exists is not here to engage in a meaningful debate. I don't know when councillor Wong last visited the Ain Bumpen Lagoon, but I'm sure that whoever drafted up that little speech for him has half a clue, I'm not really sure. Anyways, irregardless, this motion is about delivering, fully funding the Ain Bumpen Lagoon management plan to remediate and ensure the long-term health of what is a beloved and iconic local space for Northsiders. I know I've been there, there's, you know, the Ain Bumpen Festival, which was only, was it last weekend, the weekend before, very recently, like thousands of people flock to this iconic spot. It is a space that we should be proud of, showing off to the community and council should be investing in it as the custodians of what is an extremely important local space, whether that's, you know, hosting local events, the cultural significance of it. There are too many benefits of it to mention. So in summing up, not really surprised, a little bit disappointed that through you, Chair, councillor Wong had to be the one who drew the short straw to stand up in this place and read that pre-prepared speech. This is not a good outcome for the residents in Sandgate and in the Deegan Ward and certainly it doesn't set a good precedence for basic maintenance projects for important local spaces to get the funding that they deserve.
Further debate? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, Madame Chair, thank you. I rise to speak in regards to the rehabilitation of this iconic lagoon. And I know councillor Cassidy has been talking about this lagoon for a number of years. And I have some experience in regards to a body of water and what happens when that body of water isn't maintained by this council. You know, it's only a few short years ago that the Forest Lake itself was in probably worse condition or if not the same, if not worse condition. And that was basically because we didn't follow a maintenance plan that was set down in 2000 by the developer before they exited the development itself. And this is probably what is happening over at the lagoon, that the maintenance plan that was set down some years ago to maintain this lagoon isn't being followed or they need a new plan. And that's what happened at the Lake of Forest Lake. We needed a new plan and we worked with Griffith University to put that plan together, along with council officers. And the plan they came up with was not much different than the plan that we originally had, but what was different, of course, is how we maintain the body of water, and that's in my case, the lake itself, and in councillor Cassidy's, of course, it would be the lagoon. We had to desilt, that was the number one thing. You've got to desilt because that's where your nutrients are buried at the bottom of the lake and you're never going to get good water quality unless you get rid of the silt first. And then the other thing you're going to have to do in this lagoon that happened at the lake is you're going to have to take out those water body plants, right, that should not be in there, right? And they should be replanted with water body plants that actually will absorb nutrients, right? And at the same time, not become so overgrown that you can't actually use the lagoon itself. And this is, and this is what they did out at Forest Lake. They built most of the, a lot of the water, water plants were around the edge of the lake, right? They took out the old stuff, the papyrus, which is probably the worst thing you could ever put in, and they took that out. So, and once they started to do that, of course, things started to improve. Now, blue-green algae, which of course they have at the lagoon, we've got it, we just, we still have it. And sometimes you can't really do much to sort of reduce that other than to keep your water quality up as best you can. But sometimes that strategies work sometimes and sometimes they don't. But really, optically, if you look at the lake now, as I'm sure the lagoon would look if you would spend the money on it, right? Optically, that looks clean, tidy and healthy. And the water quality is healthy at the moment and that's what can happen out at the lagoon as well. But unless you invest the money, you're just not going to get the results that the rapaires deserved to be able to use this beautiful lagoon, especially during their festival, right? It must be one of those issues that I'm sure residents bring up to councillor Cassidy all the time. Thank you, Chair.
Is there further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly, I, just out of respect for councillor. I, just out of respect for councillor Cassidy, who is unwell today, is my understanding from his colleagues, I think that this is a disrespectful action by the LNP. I don't believe that it is in the spirit of their code of conduct. I do not believe that councillor Huang thought this up on his own. He is the mere vessel of the LNP Brains Trust, the LNP Brains Trust that have decided that when a councillor is sick, they will be petty and try and move a motion that obviously that local councillor cares about. Now, I've been the subject of this as well. So I'd just say that this is another step in the anti-democratic actions of the LNP, and to coin councillor Cassidy, it shows the regime is alive and well.
Any further debate? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I won't thank the opposite for their contribution, because none of them actually even spoke about Ain Bumpun Lagoon. They spoke about councillor Cassidy and Forest Lake. But the reality is...
Councillor Collier. Councillor Collier. Caution you about calling out. I've warned you enough today about calling out while another speaker is on their feet.
The reality is councillor Cassidy has spoken already on this motion, and this motion actually now stands as an incompetent motion that we have allowed full debate on, and the local councillor has already spoken. So the vitriolic personal attacks by those officers who love a good bully is just false.
Any... Thank you, councillors. Councillors. Is there any further debate? If there's no further debate, we'll now put the motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The nos have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Strong. Councillors, ayes to my right and nos to my left. Please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the nos have it, the voting being six in favour and seventeen against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Further speakers? Councillor Givney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise today to highlight the remarkable tradition of the ECHA and the support of medical research through the sale of its strawberry sundaes. As the winds picked up in recent weeks, it was clear that ECHA was drawing near. This beloved event officially known as the exhibition has been a cornerstone of Queensland's cultural calendar since 1876. Originally established to promote agriculture and celebrate rural achievements, the ECHA has evolved into a vibrant showcase of Queensland's culture, community, and innovation. It now features a range of attractions, including amusement rides, live entertainment, diverse food stalls, and crucially agricultural displays. Notably, fireworks were introduced in 1894, adding to the festival's night entertainment. Despite only pausing on four occasions in its history during the influenza outbreak in 1919, World War II in 1942, and COVID-19 pandemic in 2020 and 2021, the spirit of the ECHA continues. Last year, the event set a record with 300,000 tickets sold. It's unfortunate the state government did not prioritise the reopening of the ECHA train station in time for this year's event, which may impact numbers this year due to the accessibility for patrons. Since 1950, in the 1950s, the ECHA's strawberry sundaes have become an annual icon. Featuring locally grown strawberries and lick ice cream proudly a Brisbane business, for over 35 years, the proceeds of these sales have supported the Prince Charles Hospital Foundation through the common good. These funds are crucial for medical research, and many of the 2,000 volunteers involved have personal connections to the medical teams at the Prince Charles. This year, councillor Wolf and I have had the pleasure of volunteering at the Sunday stalls and councillor Parry, scheduled for later this week. On Sunday evening, my shift supervisor, Marie, informed me that the stalls scoop about 11,000 ice creams a day. Our stall was perfectly positioned next to the spectacular fireworks, and the after-show rush was intense, but efficient procedures ensured the lines moved quickly. I want to extend my gratitude to the hard-working volunteers who make this annual tradition possible. Looking ahead, the ECHA is set to celebrate its 150th year in 2027. I'm confident that it'll be the most epic celebration yet. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Chong Hua.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak about congestion and public transport in Brisbane. During the chamber's recess, two important reports were released about congestion and public transport, with both reports highlighting deep structural failings in Brisbane's transport strategy and management of our transport system. While it might be uncomfortable for this council administration, these reports should be acknowledged and reflected on in these chambers. An international report, the INRICS Global Traffic Scorecard for 2023 and the first quarter of 2024, was released, analysing traffic congestion data from more than 900 cities around the world. Commute times were based around major employment centres in metropolitan areas like the Brisbane CBD. This report calculates total congestion relative to the population size of each city. Of 900 cities around the world, this study found Brisbane to be the 12th most congested city in the world. The report also calculated average delays per driver. The lost hours per driver places Brisbane not 12th, but actually 10th worst in the world, with 74 hours lost per commuter per year. What is perhaps most concerning is that the congestion is getting worse, not better, with the latest Brisbane result being 10% worse than the year before. It is clear that the LNP administration's strategy for the last 20 years of actively encouraging people to commute in their private motor vehicles is not working. This council has been spending billions upon billions of ratepayers' dollars on continuously expanding roads, while other cities around the world have been focusing on public enacted transport to provide viable, cheaper, and more efficient ways to commute to work. But this wasn't the only transport report released over the chamber's recess. The Australian Climate Council also released a major public transport report in July. This study found that all of the major Australian cities, Brisbane has the worst access to all-day frequent public transport services. Only 33% of Brisbane residents live within an 800-metre walk of frequent public transport service. The report found that access to good public transport services in Brisbane ends about eight kilometres from the CBD. For some context, the Brisbane City Council area runs approximately 90 kilometres south from the CBD, more than 18 kilometres north of the CBD, and over 15 kilometres to the east. So this administration cannot just blame this report's data on Logan City Council or Morton Bay City or Redlands. As the Climate Council says, more shared enacted transport is a win-win for millions of people who live in our biggest cities, that slashes climate pollution from transport, cuts the cost of living, makes our streets safer and less congested, and cleans up our air. So it's no surprise that our state government wants to take control of Brisbane's buses. Brisbane's transport system is one of the worst in the world? Why? The reason is absolutely because we have had an LNP administration in power in Brisbane City for the last 20 years. This tired and outdated politics of the LNP have completely failed in their management of this city's transport system. Let's be honest, after 20 years of failure, the metro is too little too late. With the state government's 50-cent public transport trial, it is crucial that the opportunity is taken to increase capacity through adding additional bus services and bus lines. We have already seen an increase of 10% patronage in the first days of the trial. Now is the time to take action. The council administration must get busy submitting business cases to the state government for more high-frequency bus services and to create interconnected networks by adding a combination of radial, inter-suburban, and inter-nodal connections. Our Greens vision is for a total of 43 high-frequency routes, up from 21 currently, allowing residents to get nearly anywhere by a bus. We could create 15 new high-frequency routes and upgrade 10 high-frequency routes to double the existing high-frequency network. If this LNP administration does not utilise this opportunity to increase capacity, then they do not deserve to manage Brisbane's bus service, and we'd be better off managed by the state government.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak about two things. The first thing is about the new local laws, and the second thing is to respond to councillor Howard in relation to the juggler's art space at Tarragindy. The first thing I'd like to say is, obviously, I've been in this chamber a long time, 21 years, so I've seen it all. I've seen the behaviour of Campbell Newman, I've seen his rantings and ravings, I've seen pathetic behaviour in terms of councillors in this place, I've seen bullying, I've seen a lot of really unimpressive behaviour. And certainly been on the receiving end of some of it, too. And I just want to put on the record that these rules that the LNP have pushed through are totally undemocratic. They're not good for the city, they're not good for debate. I understand you want to control things, but it's actually not good for our democracy, it's not good for our city, it's not good for ideas. And I suppose one of the things that worries me the most, and I deal with many officers, is people watch this.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, Deputy.
Will councillor Griffiths take a question?
I think that's...
Just do...
Sorry.
I think that's a no.
I just want to say that council staff watch this, residents watch this, and they are offended by this behaviour. But the behaviour that's going on here sets a tone through the organisation that employees and executives think are or is acceptable, and it's not acceptable. There's a secrecy that is in this chamber that employees think is acceptable. So I just want to put that on the record, because I have real concerns about what's happening here now. Now, I want to get back to, speaking of unacceptable, I just want to talk about deceit and dishonesty. I had a meeting with the Lifestyle Chair, several meetings before the election in relation to the juggler's art space, and we were both on the same page. We have been working together on this, and I noted that she said I was informed about this on Friday, I wasn't. I had a phone call from a group on Friday saying, "Did you know councillors are doing this? Council are reneging on what they told you and what they told us." I wasn't actually informed by a council officer until yesterday, after I wrote to them. So talk about deceitful and dishonest. This is a very serious thing. The fact that we're looking at removing the top story of a very intact building, and I've been in that building with Scouts Queensland, because it has some asbestos and has a leaking roof, is very concerning, but it does deliver what the developer wants, of giving clear views for a number of units through to the bushland. So it does do that. But this is wrong for the community. We should be restoring and looking after our community spaces. We shouldn't be cutting them in halves. I am disgusted by the way I've been played with this. I actually thought you had a bit more integrity, councillor Howard. I'm disgusted by what has gone on here, and there is a lot more to this story, and it shall come out. And I look forward to being at a public meeting where councillor Adams and councillor Howard and Lord Mayor can explain what they're doing to this building. And I look forward to hearing about their roles in what has gone on with this development on site, and then what is going on with this building. Because we shouldn't be losing community infrastructure. We shouldn't be losing community infrastructure. We shouldn't be selling off community infrastructure. We should be keeping it and growing it and improving it as a council. And if you, as LNP councillors, think you're working for developers and not for the residents of Brisbane, then I have a real problem with that, and I'm going to speak out, and I'm going to get that spotlight out, and I'm going to shine it in the little crevices and all the places where you guys are doing disreputable things. And there are so many things in council at the moment that are really rotten. Yeah, I'm really disgusted by this, and I'm disgusted by the way this has been handled.
Any further speakers? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak about the bequests left by the late and former local state member for Stretton Duncan Peg, who donated to the Brisbane First Chinese Scouts. The Chinese Scouts are one of two around town, with one club tailoring to Mandarin-speaking families, and the Brisbane First group tailoring towards those who speak Cantonese. They invited me last Saturday to take a look at the tents they bought using half the bequest, and created a certificate of appreciation for me to deliver to Duncan's parents and also his brothers. It's great to know that these tents will be used by the kids who come from local families, and although the Scouts are actually located in councillor Stephen Huang's ward, many of the families who attend the hut are also from councillor Kim Marks's and my ward. I wanted to recognise the work of the Scouts and sincerely thank them for remembering Duncan's contribution and his legacy. Duncan had also left bequests for many other community groups in my local area that he worked with over his terms, which we presented after his passing. Over the time of his terminal diagnosis, in my opinion, it was his love for community groups, his passion for working with legends like Gary, Sam, and Winnie, meeting awesome people every day that kept him going for much longer than originally informed. He met people in his office right up until the end. So thank you Brisbane First Chinese Scouts for a pretty beautiful weekend, and I look forward to seeing you again, and generally for the community groups we all have in our local area. We're lucky to have so many volunteers who do thankless jobs and love giving back. I know that's the case for the Wong family who run the Scouts and have a history doing Scouts in Hong Kong, before doing the same over here. Earlier on this year, I also attended their annual presentation, a showcase of their great work and accomplishments. I also said that I look forward to continuing on Duncan's and James Martin's strong support they had for the Scouts, as well as local members Peter Russo and Graham Perrett. We're all with you. So I look forward to joining the Scouts for their anniversary dinner at Landmark in October this year, and know all of the council will continue to show strong support from them from all sides of the chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly, I rise to speak on council's commitment to zero waste and in particular compost caddies. Earlier today, I asked councillor Hutton a question in the City Standards Committee about the status of compost caddies, and I just thought I'd add to her knowledge of this issue, where she didn't believe me this morning. So I have an email here from Waste dated Thursday, the 13th of June, that's two months ago today, and it says, "Unfortunately, there are no available stock for kitchen caddies for community..." for community composting hubs, as we have had a sudden rush on the caddies. We're in the process of obtaining more stock, however, the date of arrival is currently unknown. They note my request and will be notified. So that is exactly eight weeks ago today. Now, my staff have also followed up, and there is still no timeframe for the composting caddies. So when councillor Hutton stands up in this place and says this council is committed to zero waste, the evidence of that is contrary to what she says, in that it has cut the FOGO programme and can't be bothered to supply kitchen caddies for the only composting programme that council does offer for households. And two months on, we still have no idea when myself and other councillors will be restocked. So, eight weeks today, and I'm sure it's going to be much longer. I look forward to your response next week.
Further speakers? As there's no further speakers, we'll now move to the notice of motion at item eight on the agenda. Councillor Johnston, would you please move the motion?
Just a point of order before we commence, Madam Chair.
Yes, what's your point of order?
Thank you. Could you confirm I have 10 minutes to introduce the motion?
No, it's five.
Could you please point me to the rule in the meeting's local law, so I'm aware of what that is, please?
Yeah, I can do that, just one moment. It'll be under 41 because it's 41.3. Yep. So 48, time limits. A councillor shall speak for no more than five minutes unless the council otherwise resolves.
Apologies, I just couldn't hear. Section...
That's all right, I'll get, what page number is it? It's on page 33, and it's 48.1, under Division 9. And it'll have time limit there, councillor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I move that Brisbane City Council maintains access for vehicles during the proposed maintenance works on the Walter-Taylor Bridge in September. And I need a second.
Second. It has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Chong Wah, that the motion that Brisbane City Council maintains access for vehicles during proposed maintenance works on the Walter-Taylor Bridge in September. Is there any debate?
I rise on this important issue today because of the LMP's failure to properly communicate with the residents of Brisbane. There is significant issues with what was provided to me on Friday, and it is now important that council addresses the concerns that I have and the community has about the unexpected full closure of the Walter-Taylor Bridge from the 13th till the 30th of September. Now, we all heard the Lord Mayor's dishonest comments here earlier today. Instead of engaging on the practical issues to impact...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, Deputy.
I believe that, that adjective is an opinion and is imputing motive and should be withdrawn.
It has been used quite a bit throughout the debate, and I did caution earlier that it wasn't necessarily the best language to use, so I will ask if you could consider rephrasing, councillor Johnston.
The Lord Mayor certainly engaged in dishonest commentary today, false commentary today that does not aid in the important issues we need to address.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order.
That is still imputing motive, just because councillor Johnson doesn't agree with the Lord Mayor does not make him dishonest.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It is insinuating. It is insinuating and imputing motive, councillor Johnston, so I think, I, I, I think that you need to...
Are you making...
I think you need to be careful about making accusations like that, because it is actually your opinion, okay? Councillor Johnston, I think you want to get to your reasons for your motion.
I do, and I understand the LMP don't want me...
But I would ask you to refrain from...
Thank you for taking up my time, and that's what councillor Adams is doing, I completely understand what's happening here. And she continues to interject repeatedly through this. Now, and councillor Hutton's laughing, it's her residents that are going to cop the abuse of what happens in September, and it's councillor Wolf who thinks that this is a short and unproblematic bridge closure in her posts. But I want to put on the record my concerns, and these are in writing to the CEO of council. Firstly, I'm suggesting that Brisbane City Council investigate whether or not the maintenance works can be moved to January, approximately the 5th to the 18th of January, as it's a much quieter time of year with limited sport, university, and school events. Two, consider making Legacy Way free to provide alternative city access in recognition of the lengthy detour accessing the city, and to prevent further pressure being added to the already highly congested South Brisbane and only access to the expressway. Three, urgently investigate with Cook Street and Oxley Road, whether Cook Street and Oxley Road can cope with the expected traffic volumes, and consider temporary traffic lights or other traffic management measures to ensure this local east-west connection remains safe and accessible. Four, urgently investigate temporary local traffic calming through the backstreets of Corinda and Oxley. Five, immediately clarify and provide a map outlining the route of the detour at Honour Avenue Chelma and the impact of local streets in Chelma. Six, immediately clarify for residents in Chelma with driveways north of Bridge Street inside the proposed road closure area, what their access is. Seven, immediately improve pedestrian and bike access to the Jackpech Bridge, which currently is serviced by a staircase. Immediately provide cycling and pedestrian detour plans for Southside residents to safely access the Jackpech Bridge. Urgently confirm whether ambulances will be able to use the Jackpech Bridge for emergency access, given they are wider than two metres. Immediately come clean with Brisbane residents about the future lifespan of the Walter-Taylor Bridge, because councillor Andrew Wines on ABC Radio told Brisbane residents the lifespan of the Walter-Taylor Bridge was 15 years. You want to talk about a major stuff-up and misinformation, the chairman of the Infrastructure Committee does not know what the timeframe, the lifespan of the Walter-Taylor Bridge is. Further, note and deal with the fact that elderly disabled residents will have no access to public transport, a Sherwood rail station does not have a lift, and there is no universal access. Plus, there is a long uphill walk from Indrapilly rail station to meet disability standards. Putting pedestrians and cyclists on the Jackpech Bridge with cars will put them at risk. That closing the bridge will provide, will cause critical health and hospital services in the western suburbs to be severed from residents. Note that the detours proposed are via congested roads that are subject to major construction, including the existing Centenary Motorway upgrade and the Moghl Road upgrade. Note that there is no right turn from Honour Avenue to Bridge Street, the actual proposed detour by Brisbane City Council, and no clear or safe plans for diversions other than through the narrow residential streets of Chelma, putting residents' safety at risk. Clarify what emergency services can use the Jackpech Bridge. Clarify whether the Taylor Bridge playground and park will remain open to the public. Provide a construction management plan so we know what to expect. And make sure there's better notification to residents. These are the issues this council needs to address, and they're ignoring it.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and I rise to, to speak on this motion. Madam Chairman, in this chamber, we've, we normally receive a number of motions, those being competent, those being incompetent. I think this is a first, this would be technically impractical motion, and for reasons why the Lord Mayor stated earlier today. What we do have to remember is that the Walter-Taylor Bridge concrete decking is a replacement of a timber decking. It is basically custom-engineered concrete to replace the old timber decking. So when you look at the construction of the bridge, the fixing points are at either end and in the centre of the road. If you are working on the joints in the centre of the road, you cannot maintain access for the bridge, you have to close it, you have to maintain a safe workspace. And this is why the bridge needs to be closed. Additionally, Madam Chairman, the sealant that is used, as per the briefing note, has a very, very long curing time. Now, the reason why you don't want any vehicles travelling over the deck while the sealant is curing is because, what does vibration do to a liquid? It aerates it. What is the job of a sealant? To keep air and water out. So for this reason, having vibration on the bridge while the sealant is going through the curing phase is impractical. It's not possible. It's important that we do seal the bridge, because one thing that we know from concrete is that if the moisture gets into the concrete, concrete suffers from concrete cancer. Correct. Additionally, putting down the sealant underneath the new surface needs to be sealed so the water doesn't enter the concrete decking platforms. Additionally, as well, having concrete beams replacing the timber, concrete expands at a completely different rate than timber. We are talking about a bridge that was designed with timber decking, and it was engineered, re-engineered back in 1993 with concrete decking. So the expansion rates between the concrete and the timber are different, therefore maintaining those joints is highly, highly important. One thing I do know, Madam Chairman, is with the number of bridges that has been replaced in my ward, and some of them have taken a few years, and some of them have taken up to six months. The important thing is, is that the lifespan of the bridge is maintained and sometimes extended by regular maintenance. This is regular maintenance to ensure that a valuable piece of council infrastructure is going to keep Brisbane moving for the next 30, 40, 50, 60 years. This is important, because as we know, that, that western corridor that runs through that area not only feeds people from the north to the south, but also cyclists, such as myself, we use the River Loop, it's an important connector. And we love doing that on a Sunday morning. So this is why all of this is important, and this is why, Madam Chairman, this motion is technically impractical. The bridge must close so the work can be done. It's important that this work is done, because we are keeping Brisbane moving, we made a commitment as a team to keep Brisbane moving, and that is what we will continue to do, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. And it was interesting to hear councillor Toomey speak there, and I'm, I'm rising to speak in support of the motion before us, to say that it is likely that this work will work for the next 40, 50, or 60 years. Can you please show us the reports? Can you please table the reports so that we can actually judge that for ourselves? Can you actually show us a report that says this has to happen in the school holidays in September? This is urgent. You know, where is the urgency? Where are the reports? What have you been doing for the last 20 years if you haven't been maintaining this This motion makes perfect sense to me. If I was a councillor for that area, I would be wanting to know why I wasn't consulted. It seems standard practice now in the bureaucracy that councillors aren't consulted, well, certainly opposition councillors aren't consulted, LMP councillors are consulted, and then it goes out for consultation before you've even seen it, councillor Johnston. How bad is that? Oh no, that's standard practice under these hillbillies. So there's no consultation with local councillors, they're not listening to the suggestions and the needs of the local community, and we are seeing wrong and bad decisions made. This is a major river crossing point for my residents, for your residents, and for instance, on the other side. Do we hear anything from the councillor over there? Crickets. That's why she's an LMP councillor, because she doesn't question anything. You just go along with the crew, with your fellow hillbillies. This is shocking. This shouldn't be done at this time of year, this should be done at Christmas, when it's quiet, when residents have the opportunity to make plans, when our roads aren't used and congested. This is just such a poor decision. It's a decision that this council is going to really regret, and it's going to be something that certainly councillor Johnston and Mark Bailey, the local MP, will take up. And they'll get the community involved, and they will show the Hicksville, the Hicksville thinking of this administration, they will show it up, because it's just getting worse and worse, and God knows what it's going to be like if the LMP return to state parliament. We saw what happened last time the LMP were in state parliament, that went well for you. I can only see, I can only see really bad governance happening if, if we see another group of hillbillies in, in the state chamber. I support what councillor Johnston's doing, I support this motion. We need to be using our common sense and look at rescheduling this to January, when it's quieter, when residents have more time to plan, when residents, when we have more time to close the road and prepare for this, for this work that needs to be done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers? No further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you to both councillors who contributed to the debate, and I thank councillor Griffiths for reminding us of some of the key issues here. The timing is not immediate. I don't, we haven't been told that the bridge is at imminent collapse, we haven't been told there's a problem with the bridge, other than these are, and to quote councillor Toomey and councillor Wines, routine maintenance works. So the decision has been made to do this work in September, providing residents who still don't even have a flyer or any information about this in their letterboxes, less than a month's notice, closing an arterial road that carries up to 35,000 vehicles a day. Now, it's a bit rich from councillor Toomey to stand up in here and say, I've been through bridge closures. I recall the Gresham Street Bridge, there was a temporary bridge built to maintain access for the few hundred residents who live in St John's Wood, and his residents got a temporary bridge so that they could go across. Now, there's not even any kind of consideration being given to residents in Tennyson Ward to provide them with a bus service that provides universal access. This is what we're talking about. So, I will say the following. Councillor Andrew Wines is hiding on this issue, and I understand why he sent councillor Toomey out there after his disastrous ABC radio interviews. He cannot get his facts and figures right. He has scared the Jesus out of everybody by saying there's only a 15-year lifespan left in the Walter-Taylor Bridge. And I don't know what councillor Toomey's quoting from. The last time there were major bridge repairs, we were told it would extend the life of the bridge for 80 years. So is it 15 or is it 80? I don't know. Yeah, table the documents. But here are the big issues that need to be addressed by this council. It is not good enough, it is not good enough that the Lord Mayor stands up and simply attacks me for raising critically important issues for the community that I represent. He is the Lord Mayor, he's not even, couldn't even be bothered to be here. The timing of the bridge was a council decision. It is clearly supported by the Lord Mayor and the LMP. It does not address the needs of our local community, and strong consideration should be given to looking an alternate date. And the reason that that should happen is because of all the issues that I have outlined today around how this road closure for the Walter-Taylor Bridge for 17 days will adversely impact on our local community. Elderly people will not have access to public transport, because there are stairs at the train station they're going to be dumped at. We, there are, there is no actual detour at... We, there are, there is no actual detour at the detour point. So I look forward to telling all the Chelma residents on the high side of Chelma that their street, in addition to being an everyday rat run, they're not even going to get the benefit of the bridge being closed because all the detour traffic is going on Honour Avenue is going to have to turn left into Hanlan and into Victoria or Laurel Avenue. They're going to love that. And this administration has simply failed to look at how the traffic will impact on the existing road network. Cook Street and Oxley Road is a car park at the best of times. All of this traffic, and it might not be 35,000, it might be 20,000 vehicles a day. Let's say half of them go up Cook Street. How on earth is 17 Mile Rocks Road going to cope with another 10,000 vehicles a day or Cook Street? It is just insane. It, it, it's, it's bad planning. And the problem with this council is they did this in secrecy. They did this in secrecy. If there had been engagement with me, with councillor Wolf, and perhaps there was, she's silent on this issue, perhaps she knew all about it. Because I know there was money in the council budget for roadworks on the bridge. And yes, we did ask questions and get information. But guess what? Council knew then that they were going to close the bridge for three months, and they did not tell us soul. It is clear to me that this has been in the planning for many months. There are serious, serious deficiencies with what is planned. And I urge council to take a step back and make sure that this does not hurt residents. I don't want anyone to die because they cannot get to hospital because it will take 20 minutes to get an ambulance. We don't have an ambulance depot close by. I do not want to see cyclists or children left at train stations.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. We'll now put the motion to the vote. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Second up. A division has been called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Chong Wah. Councillors' ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour and 15 against.
The motion is lost. As there is no further business, I declare the meeting closed.